Good evening. Welcome to the North Hampton City Council Meeting of December 6, 2012. I'm City Council President Bill Dwight. We will start the proceedings by hearing from the public. And I need to clear some things up now. Actually, for folks who are keeping score, the council -- I am the council president, and as a council president under the new charter, I am the presiding officer of the council meetings. And as you can see, we don't have the mayor up here because the mayor has his own office. This is our office, if you will. This is where we conduct our work. And eighty-five percent of the voting public decided that that was a reasonable exchange for division of powers. So as a result, we're still working out, and you'll see tonight as we work out and try to hack our way through the change. And so I beg the public's indulgence and the council's indulgence as we move forward on that. We're going to start with the proceedings, of course, with the hearing from the public. And the rules for public comment are simple, but they are firm. And I'm making this assertion tonight because of an experience on my first night as presiding over here. We ask that speakers keep their comments under three minutes, and there will be a timer up here that will show you the time remaining. If the speaker is wrapping up their comments at the end of the allotted time, they'll be allowed to finish, of course. But if a speaker continues to speak beyond the time and does not close their remarks after a caution from the chair, I will recess the meeting, the cameras will go off, and we will not reconvene until the speaker clears the chambers. And then we also reserve the right to bar the speaker from the privilege of speaking before this body during the public comment section in the future. So with that said, on the sign-up sheet, first up, Ed Etheridge.
Good evening. Edward Etheridge, 64 Gothic Street, North Hampton. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Lathrop Community, which has a petition and now an ordinance before you that has been approved by the planning board. I think forwarded to you without recommendation by the ordinance committee for rezoning of a parcel on 716 Bridge Road, which is adjacent to the Lathrop community there. I'm here tonight with Paul Phillips, who is the new executive director of the Lathrop community. The reason the Lathrop communities have filed a petition for the rezoning is because they'd like to look at some future development on that site. But the present zoning does not allow for density that would allow them to expand the community to that site. We have entered into a development agreement with the city, which would preclude the inclusion of the front house unless all access to Bridge Road were through the existing Lathrop entrance. So it would eliminate, if that were developed, a curb cut on Bridge Road. But before Lathrop community can commit to even proceeding with any type of development -- we hope for a better economy, but what we really have to do is they have to spend a substantial sum of money on the study of drainage, infrastructure, other sorts of issues on that site. But it makes no sense to do those studies if you can't build anything there anyway based upon the circumstances. So we've requested a petition for rezoning. I know, and you may, if you've seen the planning board reports, seeing that the city council has -- this planning board has considered this general area for some rezoning. But we'd like to proceed with the studies, but it makes no sense without the zoning change to do that. With that, I'd like to cede to Paul Phillips, who's second on the list, to speak.
And you're absolutely right. Paul Phillips is up next.
Good evening. My name is Paul Phillips, and as Ed said, I am executive director at Lathrop. I've been there since June. It's an honor and pleasure for me to serve with our board of directors and our staff and meet in the needs of our residents, as we have for many years, on our North Hampton campus, to be exact, since 1989 or so, when the campus opened. The demographics of society are very clear, as they are here in North Hampton. We do have a desire to expand our services and explore a responsible and meaningful, impactful way to do that. And I think it behooves all of us to create a North Hampton that is senior-friendly, where many folks who have been longtime residents here can remain where they want to be, and also where others from other communities can come and enjoy all that North Hampton has to offer. Part of that is having good quality housing associated with a nonprofit sponsor like Lathrop that's been doing this work for so long, and dare I say, so well over the years. Under the current zoning, as was mentioned, it's not feasible for us to develop the property. We did acquire the property this past summer with an eye toward potential development someday. We have no immediate development plans, but in order for us to even get started with preliminary analysis of the site in terms of its potential to expand services, it is necessary for us to know that there's a path forward for development of that property that would make economic sense for us to do. I think anybody who is a neighbor of Lathrop would attest. We have been a good neighbor over many years. We've been very responsible, very community-minded, ever since the North Hampton campus was developed. With that in mind, we have no particular quarrel with our neighbors. As a matter of fact, we'd like to be in collaboration with our neighbors and with city council and other involved parties to carefully address and resolve some of the issues surrounding city and surrounding infrastructure. We're aware of those topics. We are very sensitive to those topics. We wouldn't pretend to minimize those for a moment, but we feel that development in a responsible way of that property could not only expand services to seniors, as we would hope to do, but also would do so in such a way that would resolve some issues in to everybody's satisfaction. So with that in mind, we're appreciative of the opportunity to come before you this evening to request your approval of this petition for map change so that we have a clear path forward to explore potential development, to expand the services that Lathrop has done so well for so many years. I thank you for your time.
Next up is Alicia Ralph.
Hello, Alicia Ralph, 755 West Hampton Road. I think you probably all recognize me most from my visits here to encourage you to go to North Hampton Reuse Committee events, and today is no different. This Saturday, we'll be holding our second annual toy exchange, which means that Friday night, we're all going to be showing up at Smith Vocational School with all of the toys that people will want to drop off, sort them on tables, and then bright and early on Saturday morning, the people who have donated toys can take the first pick, and then the doors will open at nine, and just come and take the toys. It's so fun. Last year was a blast, and I imagine that this year is going to be even better because more really good organizations will know about the event and take all their little goodies. So that's number one. And number two, it would be very hard for me to let Valley Gives Day go by without saying something, so 12-12-12 is a really great day for all the nonprofits in the entire valley. But of course, I have to put in a plug for New Century Theater, who has a cute little video. Go see that and give on the 12th so that they get a little extra and plus bonuses. And both the libraries in the city are participating in the Valley Gives Day, so you should check out the video that the Forbes Library put together today, and that is adorable. And make sure you check out valleygives.org. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. David Cotton, you're up next.
I'm Dave Cotton. I live at 736 Bridge Road in North Hampton. And the parcel land that abuts my property, I live at 736 Bridge Road, it runs for about 700 feet along my property line. And over the last 24 years since the original project was built, we've seen a significant increase in the amount of drainage flows and flooding that we've had on our property. And it's not so severe that it lasts for three or four days and goes away. And my concern is the additional four acres that Lathrop's considering developing, there really is no way to change the drainage from where it is. And the site has -- is consisting of about seven feet of sand over blue clay. Pretty much that's the whole overlay. So even if detention ponds were put in, the -- any water runoff from any impervious areas, roofs or walkways or roadways, would perk through the soil and hit this blue clay layer, which all leans toward the ravine, so the water flows all go into the ravine. And over the past five years, we've had some pretty serious storms, and I've seen Bridge Road overwhelmed -- I'm sorry, Hatfield Street overwhelmed twice with water flows from the north side, and that caused significant erosion. And back then, there was only two gas mains that ran through the area, but now there's a third gas main, a 12-inch gas main, high pressure, that feeds the power plant at UMass. And the city's fixed it twice in the last three years. And even now, there's new erosion on the south side that's starting to cut in and undermine the road. And so I think that a rezoning of it, or any development at all, would be an issue. And I have some photos. If I could pass them to the council?
Just hand to Council Murphy, who'll pass them on.
I think that any development should be looked at pretty carefully, and I don't think it's a good idea to change the zoning on this at this point in time until the real infrastructure problems are addressed and dealt with. But Lathrop has been a good neighbor, and my father and I supported it in 1988 when it was built because it was a facility where we felt that the elders in North Hampton would have a place to go. And I know that they've done an excellent job with it, and they've had vacancies, so it's been adequate. And of course, they expanded to East Hampton. But this four acres that they're discussing is an extremely delicate situation, and there's some real hazards that could be created from any future runoff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Stephen Susko.
Yes, Susko, Steve Susko, 754 Bridge Road, S-U-S-C-O. I'm opposed to and ask you to reject the rezoning of 716 Bridge Road on your agenda this evening. This proposed rezoning will foster intensive development of this large parcel resulting in greatly increased storm drainage into an already seriously overloaded storm drainage system, also known as and including my backyard. I and many of my neighbors are greatly negatively impacted by the existing situation now, and it doesn't need to be and should not be exacerbated. Recent development in this area of North Hampton has effectively used the property of those downstream as a drainage ditch. This needs to stop or at least not be enlarged. The following hold true here. You've been given and seen much evidence regarding the situation here. One neighbor has mused, "They've seen all the pictures. Isn't it enough?" We rely on restrictive zoning here as a limiter and a control mechanism. We also live with this restrictive zoning ourselves, and its limitations apply to us and will continue to apply. It's unfair to existing citizens. Rezoning parcel by parcel is spot zoning. It's supposed unlawful in Massachusetts. Your fast-track process here has limited those wishing to be heard here, and so has the use of the holiday period, a tactic to limit opposition. The planning office has no business seemingly promising petitioners a positive outcome here. You have ignored notice and abused the statute here. I wish to add additional information here now, but I can't. It can't be done in three minutes. Your rejection of the Citizen Barry Roth Charter Initiative this past year seals the deal. Don't confuse us with facts, I suppose. You all were invited to view and tour and thereby hopefully understand the large, complex, and multifaceted situation here. Only Councilor Tacy appears to have made the effort. Why? And thanks, Councilor Tacy. Not only can't I make the inputs I would like to make for you for your consideration, I can't even summarize them here. I have nine more sheets and maps and images, plus some from a neighbor who would like to make input but has holiday commitments. I would reluctantly finish by indicating that the recent big threat drainage trials of 2007 and 2009 here at Hatfield Street and Pine Brook, with Hatfield Street unwittingly acting as a drainage dam, the culverts not, again, not blocked, but rather overwhelmed. Hatfield Street in process of breaching. Did I mention the 12-inch high-pressure gas main here? And I just have a few more sentences, if it's okay. Twenty million-plus gallons of storm water aimed straight at the culvert under the Big Y Strip Mall, a tiny 18-inch diameter facing $20 million. Did good planning save us here? No. Did smart planning save us here? No. Did the DPW save us? Nope. What then? Dumb luck, that's all. It stopped raining, not even a 50-year storm, though, and we're due. We're so due. The last one was in 1955. This just isn't a good idea. My apologies for the overtime.
Thank you, Mr. Susko. That's it for the list. Is there anyone else who'd wish to speak today? Greg?
Good evening. Greg Jones, 42 Graves Avenue. I just wanted to make a quick -- or have a quick request. I'm kind of speaking for a bunch of Graves Avenue residents who couldn't be here this evening. We found out a few days ago that the planning board was going to bring up the possible purchase of a strip of land that would connect the end of Graves Avenue with the Bridge Street Elementary School. So our request is simply that that subject be tabled to give us enough time to meet as a residents' association, and also maybe also to invite the planning board representative to come and meet with us to explain what the actual plan is. It's very vague on the sheet that I have, and I'm sure that there's a greater, deeper explanation for it. So I'm here today for that request and just to make it known that we have an interest. The Graves Avenue Residents Association has been very, very, very vigorous in improving our street for the last -- I've lived there 18 years, and we've done a pretty good job. We're cohesive and interested in improvement, but we definitely would like to have a voice and a little stewardship. Also, Peter Jeswell and Bob Mezoff, who are butters, both of which could not be here this evening as well, given the short notice. So that's why I rise, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else wish to speak tonight? All right. I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Carney?
Present.
Here.
Councilman Freeman-Daniels?
Here.
Councilman LaBarge?
Present.
Here.
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 Here. We have a quorum, and the meeting is called to order. Let's see. First off, approval of minutes for November 15, 2012.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Extentions? Sure. Actually, start with this memo? Oh, right. Okay. Okay. It's a memorandum from the city solicitor, Alan Seawald. He was addressed to me, and it's relative to the rules, so if you'll allow me, I'll read it aloud. "You requested a memorandum with regard to the transition from the former special act charter to the new special act charter, given the ratification of the new charter by the voters November 6, 2012. The former charter has now been repealed pursuant to special act section 3, and its provisions no longer govern the operation of city government. The new charter requires that the council immediately appoint a committee to review and to prepare provisions to the city's ordinances in order to bring them into conformity with the charter. Special Act Section 2, Chapter 5, I think, also requires that within 180 days from the effective date of the charter, the council enact an ordinance establishing an elected official compensation advisory board. The new charter also institutes significant changes to the structure of city government. Most notably, the charter creates a separation of powers between the executive and the legislative branches of the city government that did not exist under the former charter. Under the new charter, the mayor no longer presides over city council meetings. That authority now resides with the council president. In order to implement these provisions of the charter, it would be appropriate for the council to elect a vice president for a term ending upon the election qualification of a successor vice president after the 2013 city election. In addition, certain sections of the city council rules, including Sections 5 through 7, dealing with the mayor's role in presiding over council meetings, are inconsistent with the charter. Such inconsistent rules are superseded by the charter in accordance with Charter Section 11-1. Finally, given the separation of powers contained in the new charter, it would be appropriate to revise 22-4 and 22-8 of the code of ordinances to remove the mayor from membership of the Economic Development Housing and Land Use Committee and the Finance Committee, respectively, both of which are council committees. In order to carry out the terms of the charter, the following should be on the next agenda for the city council, and it is: Election of the council vice president in accordance with the charter, Section 2-2, to serve until the election and qualification of a council vice president after the 2013 municipal election; Discussion of a process for review and revision of city council rules to bring them into conformity with the charter; A discussion of the process for revision of 22-4 and 22-8 of the code of ordinances to remove the mayor from membership on the Economic Development Housing and Land Use Committee and the Finance Committee, respectively; Discussion of a process for appointment of four persons to a committee to review the city ordinances and to prepare revisions and amendments as needed or necessary to bring the ordinances into conformity with the charter and to fully implement the charter. The city clerk shall be the fifth member of that committee; Discussion of a process for enactment of an ordinance establishing an elected official compensation advisory board. Please let me know if you need anything further with regard to the transition to the new So with that, actually, I'm sorry, we have a one-minute announcement we should do. You think? I did take that. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so we're actually going to go right into -- for purposes -- well, for purpose of clarity, which I've already muddled up, we're going to actually move into the election of the vice president and start to address these rules so that we will be a conforming meeting. So we are -- I will open the floor for nominations for vice president.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So we're changing the order of the agenda, just so everyone's clear.
Just, yes. And the reason being that we, in order to function as a proper meeting tonight, we need to establish the criterion on which we're going to operate. So I beg the indulgence of everyone here who's following along the agenda at home or here. We're off it just a bit here. Okay, so we're accepting nominations. Council LaBarge, and then Councilor Tacy.
I am placing Councilor-at-Large Jesse Adams as a nomination for being vice president.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, we will close the nomination period and move on to the elections. First of all, actually, there's a discussion. Is there a discussion?
If I could just speak briefly. Thank you for the nomination. I just want to point out, the reason why I'm seeking this is because it's pretty simple, actually. This new change, I think, is substantial, and I think it's going to lead to a better separation of powers. And I just am asking for the opportunity to help make it be effective and help in that transition and help assist the council president in that transition. This is the end of -- this is the end product of a long, inclusive process, I think. The Best Practices Committee made a set of recommendations, and one of them is that we review our charter and modernize it. And in my first term, the Charter Review Committee was formed, and I had the opportunity to serve on that with Councilor LaBarge and Councilor Murphy, and I had the opportunity to be vice chair of that. And we made a set of recommendations, which in turn came to a charter redrafting committee. And as the council president stated earlier, the charter passed last month by about 85%. So it was overwhelming, and we now have this new opportunity. And helping make that successful is my goal, and that's my motivation, simply. I have great enthusiasm for this, and I'm willing to take on additional responsibilities. I put my name forward to be on the ordinance committee, the ordinance review committee, and I've taken a role in drafting a proposal for the council rule changes, which is also part of our transition. But I'll speak to that in a minute. As far as my qualifications go, I have made a point to try to take leadership roles in the committees that I've been on. I was the vice chair of Parking and Transportation. I was the chair of Culture and Recreation. I was the chair of the Board of Public Works and City Council Conference Committee. And I'm the current chair of Public Safety, so I think that I do have a history of taking leadership roles in committees. Additionally, as I stated earlier, I've drafted a set of proposals to our -- a set of changes to our council rules, which are just proposals. Last month, I presented them to the ordinance committee and other councilors, and I received some really good, important feedback. I've taken a lot of those recommendations and incorporated them into my next proposal, which will be heard on Monday before the ordinance committee, and I hope other councilors show up. Also, the city solicitor was kind enough to review my changes and make some suggestions, which I've incorporated. So it's under our consideration, and I look forward to taking a leadership role in that continued attempt to change the rules. So my motivation is to make this work and to assist the council president in this new change and in this transformation, so I'm asking you all for your vote. Thank you.
Any other discussion, council director?
One of a number of reasons why I seconded the nomination was the work that Councilor Adams did on reviewing the council rules, and I really appreciate the time you put into that. I've seen some of the changes you've proposed, and I've watched you go through that process as other people make suggestions, and I've been very impressed with that. And I support this strongly in the fact you were on the Charter Review Committee and put a lot of time and effort into that.
Councilor Tacy.
And then Council Murphy. Yeah. I intend to support Mr. -- Councilor Adams on this because of his work on the charter review. And now it's changed. This is a lot of work ahead of you, so I wish you all the luck in the world tonight. Appreciate you even stepping up to the plate for this. I intend to support you, too.
Council Murphy.
Councilor Adams, to this point, has been a disciple of the 11 o'clock adjournment, so I just wanted him to publicly go on record that as our apparent council vice president, he'll be generating agendas that make it possible for us to adjourn at 11 o'clock. Is he prepared to make that statement?
I'll try.
As a point of information, the duties assigned to the council vice president, at least as it stands now by charter, is to assume the gavel in the absence of the chair. On that, I'm sorry that the onus of the agenda is on me. So your truck is with me. And as we're right out of the gate, it's very likely that we may violate that rule. Councilman Freeman-Daniels.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilor Adams for speaking about his qualifications and his intentions as vice president, because even though this is an uncontested race, I think it's important that everyone that this council votes for, in whatever position, has a platform and speaks to their qualifications. So thank you.
Any other discussion? It's time for roll call vote.
Councilor Adams?
Adams.
Councilman Carney?
Councilor Adams.
Councilor Boy.
Adams.
Councilman Freeman-Daniels?
Adams.
Councilman LaBarge?
Adams.
Councilman Murphy?
Councilor Adams?
Councilman Specter?
Adams.
Councilman Short?
Councilor Adams.
Councilor Tacy?
Councilor-at-Large Adams.
Thank you.
If you see unanimous, congratulations, Mr. Vice President. You have to change your business cards. And I have to say, since I'm actually disqualified from participating in the debates, but I'd like to say at this point, after the vote, that I come to much believe that someone's got my back at this point. I was feeling pretty damn lonely the last month, so I appreciate it. Thank you. How do you think we should all sit now and just go? Okay, so I'd like to let you all know that actually, the city is governed by this woman here. Mary Majora. I think, I think out of consideration that people who are here, we're going to go, now we're going to go to, we're going to come back later to the discussion about the way we proceed with the, of rectifying with the charter, but I think in fairness, the people who've come here for proclamations, resolutions, and recognitions section of the meeting, that we're not going to subject them to that, our debate if they don't want to.
And one-minute announcements while you're good.
Yes, and we're, actually, in fact, we can start with one-minute announcements, and then I will do the...
Actually, it comes after.
One-minute announcement is right after approval of minutes.
Not up there. Okay.
Comes after this, sorry.
It's after proclamation.
We've been trumped, so now we're, so this is, this is annually, the council took a vote and passed the Certified Living Wage and Inspiring Employers Act here in the city council, and part of the duties are, part of the agreement is that each, each year the council president read the employers who are paying a living wage, which is now at $12.52, and we are encouraging you to make it a priority to patronize the certified employers who pay or aspire to pay a living wage here. And I will, and I will read you the list. Fortunately, it's actually longer than some would expect, so that's good, that's encouraging. Allcroft Facial Plastic Surgery, Barton's Angels, Center for New Americans, Chambers Advisory Group, Collective Copies, Dulong Construction, Edwards Church, Etheridge and Stewart, First Churches of Northampton, Fly-by-Night, Indigo Coffee, The Jamrog Group, Jekonowski and O'Neill, Lesser Newman and Nasser, The Literacy Project, Market Street Research, Minuteman Pest Control, National Priorities Project, The Northampton Area Podiatrics, Northampton Coffee, that's pediatrics, by the way, Northampton Community Music Center, Northampton Housing Authority, Northampton Survival Center, Richards Plumbing and Heating, Unitarian Society of Northampton and Florence, Valley Community Development Corporation, Valen Medispa, Weber and Grinnell Insurance Agency, Western Mass Legal Services, The Wall Family Dentistry, and Woodstar Cafe. Employers aspiring to pay a living wage are The River Valley Market. And I, and I think, and it's appropriate, Kitty Callahan is here, and she could speak to this a little bit, Kitty, if you'd be so kind.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much for that recognition of the employers in Northampton who are paying at least a living wage to all of their employees. And, you know, it's, it's important because many people do not make enough to make ends meet, who are earning less than $12.52 an hour. And so our coalition, with the support of this city, has been certifying employers for the past three years. And this year, we, we certified 32 employers who are paying at least a living wage, and one employer who is aspiring to pay a living wage. It's still, there still is time to certify for 2012, because I guess we've adopted the same schedule as the state. Our certification is good until June 30th of 2013, because it takes us a while to get, our certification is based on the annual, the annual total, the annual average for the CPA, the Consumer Price Index, and so we don't get that figure until mid-January, and then it takes a while for the Human Rights Commission to get that before the city council. So, so employers still can certify under 2012. And I just want to give a small update of future plans for the coalition. We had, at our annual celebration in April, we had Vicki Meath speak from Just Economics in North Carolina, and she encouraged us to hire a part-time person who could help us to have a more effective certification campaign. And also, we are thinking of, we have decided that we want to have, not just have Northampton be the only community that has a living wage campaign, that we want to expand outside of Northampton, and our next community is going to be Springfield. And we also plan to have our part-time person help us develop what we have planned to do for many years, a leadership development program for low-wage workers, so that low-wage workers can be a part of our effort. To that end, in the near future, we will, we will be changing our name from the Northampton, from the Northampton Living Wage Coalition to Western Mass, to Living Wage Western Mass, so that we can, you know, encompass more areas. So, but we are so, you know, we are so grateful that the city of Northampton and Northampton employers have embraced our campaign, and it's made such a difference for low-wage workers, and, you know, we look forward to, you know, trying to get other cities and towns to, you know, to start their own campaigns and to make a difference for those employees. So employers who are interested in certifying can go to our website and download the forms at www.livingwagenorthampton.org. So that's, that's our report for this year.
Thank you, Kitty. Consular Carney and then Consular Tacey.
Thank you. Is it safe to assume, Kitty, that the list that was read tonight is not exclusive, meaning there are likely a number of employers in the city of Northampton who do meet those criteria but have not as yet registered?
I think that that's correct. There, yeah, I think there's many employers in Northampton who have not certified.
The second part of that question, then, is it's notable that the city of Northampton is not among those employers, either in the meeting the criteria or even in the aspiring to pay a living wage. So I'm assuming that that's an oversight, or we have not as yet had the chance to make the declaration of aspiring, at least to pay a living wage, to the city of Northampton workers?
Yeah. Well, you know, I think that there's still a chance for employers to get certified this year. We have a confidential process, so we don't go into what particular employers are, you know, whether they are or not, you know, paying a living wage, but we encourage all employers, big or small, to, to think about getting certified.
And one more follow-up, as we all know, workers in the city of Northampton have their salaries actually posted on the city of Northampton's website, so it's not that difficult to find out what the salaries are. And so I would just wonder whether, what the process would be for the city of Northampton to, at the very least, declare that we are aspiring to pay a living wage?
Okay, well, the process, the process would be, we have, we have a form for employers that are, that are interested in aspiring to pay a living wage, or that are interested, that would certify as paying a living wage. And so if, if they are paying a living wage, they have to certify that every single employee is paying a living wage. If they are aspiring, they would have to agree that they would make it a goal to pay a living wage and to take steps towards paying a living wage to every employee. So we've had, we have one employer right now who is certified, River Valley Market, and so they have made it that goal, and they have also, you know, they made a goal last year, and they've taken steps, and this year, they've also said that they would take steps towards paying a living wage. Okay, thank you.
Consular Tacey and Consular LaBarge.
The, that was exactly my point, Maureen Carney. City of Hitt and I expected to find between Chambers Advisory Group and Collective Copies, or at least before the River Valley Market for employers aspiring to. This 1252, that doesn't have anything to do with any benefits or anything, does it? This 1252, I can't imagine somebody, an employer, not paying at least that. I can't imagine it. And I, and I will follow up on this, and I'm glad Maureen brought it up, Consular Carney. I'm very interested in why the city of Northampton is not on here, how that comes about, and I know you really probably can't answer that, and I don't want you to, but just wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Do you have a point, Maureen?
No, I just have a question.
Okay, it'd be Consular LaBarge and then Consular Adams.
Catherine, how many new businesses for the year of 2012 have been added onto your list, here in the city of Northampton?
Here in the city of Northampton? I think it, I think we, we, since the last time I was here, I think it's four new employers, yes.
Now, this is just for Northampton, not for Florence, or?
Well, that, it does include Florence, yes. It includes Leeds, Northampton, and Florence, yes. And I'm not sure, at this point, we may have, we may have a few in Florence, but mostly they're in Northampton.
I don't see anything from Florence.
Yes.
Copies.
Copies, yeah.
Consular?
But I want to thank you, Catherine, for working very hard on this and coming in, talking about it, and you can actually see that it's a stepping stone, and I have to commend you and all your employees for working very hard on this.
Thank you. Yeah, well, it's also, it's a, it's a volunteer, it's an all-volunteer board, and, you know, we feel that if we, with fundraising and being able to hire a part-time person, that we'll be in a better position to be more effective with getting more, more employers enrolled.
Do you think possibly because of the recession that we went into caused a problem of owners not coming forth?
Yeah, I do.
I mean, it's very difficult running businesses. So do you think maybe this is why you really haven't gotten plenty of owners to?
Well, I think actually, I think actually we do have a good number of employers, but I wish there were more, but I think that it has made it, we started our campaign at a, at a time in 2009 when things weren't doing so well, but we also felt that it was harder for the employees, and so we, we stuck with, you know, pushing our campaign forward. But I think it would, if it was a much better time, that it would be easier probably to sell our, sell our campaign to employers. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kitty. Now we're at one-minute announcements. Councils?
I'd just like to make a, an announcement that the Transportation and Parking Commission has agreed to place on the agenda an intersection that has been of concern to a number of Ward One residents for some time, and that is that intersection of Prospect and Finn Streets, often a dangerous spot for folks to cross, especially in evening hours. And so I would encourage anybody in Ward One who's interested in engaging in a, well, providing at least public comment to the Transportation and Parking Commission and being present during any possible discussion of that intersection to attend on October 18th, I'm sorry, December 18th at 4:00 p.m., am I correct?
Yep.
Counselors?
Four.
Four, thank you. Here in Ch, Consular Chambers.
Consular Murphy.
And I'd like to remind everybody, it's been in the paper quite a bit, but on December 22nd at 11 o'clock, the Northampton Police Department is welcoming everybody to celebrate their new building and tour their new building and, and see what, what their override dollars bought for them. It's a fabulous facility. I know many of us have had the opportunity to go there, but if people in general would like a tour of the building without getting themselves arrested to do it, they can come the 22nd at 11 o'clock and see the wonderful new police department. The staff will be there in their work areas to describe what they do, and they are so proud of that building, and everybody in Northampton should be. It was well past having to be done, and it's done now, and it's beautiful. So 22nd, 11 o'clock, come in and celebrate.
And room two.
Consular, until what, could you announce until what time?
11 o'clock.
Till?
Till 2:00.
Thank you.
11 to 2:00. They'll be open for tour.
And that's 2:00 in the afternoon, not the last 12:00. Consular Tacey and Consular LaBarge?
Yeah, just two quick things for the, the public, the, please bear with us on this charter. Please bear with us as we smooth this out. This is the sausage part. And also, December 18th is the Transportation and Parking Commission, and I've knocked on a few doors down around that intersection, and there seems to be a lot of interest in it, so I'm hoping to have a lot of people, this is outreach for all of those at home in that area. Please come to the meeting and give us your thoughts. Thank you.
Consular LaBarge and then Consular Adams.
I just want to echo what Consular David Murphy was talking about. All our invitations do state that all consuls and your families have been invited, so I think that's very important about our families.
Consular Adams.
The World War II Club on Con Street is having a dinner to benefit homeless vets on December 17th at 5:30, so if anybody can make that, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Okay. Back to the business of the sausage, as you referred to it. We are now on the second item of the, to review the charter transition memorandum from the city solicitor, Alan Seawald. And this purpose of the discussion, I'll open up the floor for comments and thoughts. Consular Jim Dan.
We're talking about the revision of the city council rules, is that right?
Yes.
So I, I think that there are rules in front of the ordinance committee now, and they've been revised by Consular Adams, so I hope that we don't have any massive incidents where we have to test the rule, the current rules, before the new rules come about, and I hope that the ordinance committee can speedily recommend the, the ones that are, that are in front of them at this point.
Have the councils had an opportunity to review Consular Adams' proposals?
December 10th, we will.
Right.
I know the ordinance committee has. Well, I'm just wondering about the council, okay. Consular Murphy?
Yes, we, the minutes are before us tonight of our special meeting from October 23rd. We went over all of the suggested changes, and then Consular Adams agreed to review them again, did the charter pass, and the review, second time around, of his work with those changes is on our agenda for Monday. So the ordinance committee will go over again, and again, all of you are welcome to come. We had a decent representation of the full council at our meeting on the 23rd. We hope more of you will come this time, and hopefully, based on that meeting, we'll see at our next meeting some recommended things out of the, out of those changes to bring us in line with the charter.
Consular LaBarge?
Now, he answered one of my questions.
Oh, okay. It's a couple.
Just a clarification, then, because there are so many consuls that are interested in the council rules and the impact of the charter and the work that Consular Adams has done, I would suggest, and maybe, maybe I'm already missing the fact that it's being posted as a full council meeting to deal with the fact that there may well be a quorum of this council president. And I would suggest, then, if it's not too late, to have it posted as, it's posted today as a full.
Yeah.
You can just say, if you may, if we have a quorum. I see, okay, very good, thank you.
But please do come. Consular Adams.
I've, I've been reviewing, reviewing my proposals over and over, and I have some more small changes that I've made, and I'll circulate those tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah, Consular?
I said this before, and, but thank you very much for doing this, and it was great to get those changes, and, and I really appreciate the work you've done on this.
To Item 4, which is actually going to loom a little here, the, Item 4 is the discussion of a process for appointment, I'm sorry, discussion of a process for revision of 22-4 and 22-8 of the Code of Ordinances, to remove the mayor from membership of EDLU and Finance Committee. And the, what has happened is essentially the mayor has removed himself from those, those committees already, and as such, for reasons I'm not entirely sure or clear why, it just seemed, I guess, obvious, but I have assumed the chair of the finance without benefit of a vote, and it's not written in the charter. And we should discuss the disposition and the, the assembled pieces of finance before we move into, just so we can be clear on how to proceed with finance. And any, any thoughts on that? Consular Specter and then Consular Tacey.
One thought is that you actually do proceed into finance, just a thought, because each committee does create its own rules, and so, since you don't have a chair in that committee, I would suggest you, when you move into finance, elect a chair.
Uh, the one thing that's actually mandated by the rules is that the council president serves on Finance.
Serves on Finance, but not necessarily. You were talking about chair, chairing Finance.
Right, but I think also, for consideration is, we should probably discuss why that should be.
Why the, why the?
Why the council president, by the rule, should serve on Finance. I think that's a fair discussion.
I, I, um, I thi- I think it's ordinance that requires the council president be on it, on, on the Finance Committee, and I think, I think we should, I, I think we should change that. I don't think there needs to be any requirement of that, and I don't think it's like that in every community. And I certainly don't think that there needs to be any mandate that the council president chair that committee, especially given the consideration of the, the new expanded roles of, of the council president in, in chairing the City Council. Finance is one of the most important committees, if not the most important, along maybe with ordinance, maybe, but I think we should reconsider that entirely.
Counsel Tacey.
Exactly, and we don't want to overload him and let him quit.
Yeah.
Or croak.
Uh, I don't, we could discuss that.
It's a lot of work. It's just a amount of work.
But since this would have to, any change in the ordinance.
Jesse.
Right, would have to go through ordinance for tonight's meeting, I think you will continue to need to, to serve on that committee.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm looking to leave, and in fact, actually, whatever, I'm just want to lay it out, because actually even with an ordinance change, it would, I would stand as a committee member until the end of my term.
Yeah.
Same with Jesse.
So that's, but the, just so we're clear on constituent parts, uh, Counsel Murphy and then? And Counsel Carney.
Yeah, no question.
Actually, no question, okay.
Yeah, we, we may want to look at it, because at, at present, there are four of us remaining.
Right.
And it, you know, we might just want to decide, we want to add somebody to have an odd number, or, you know, do we make it bigger or smaller, but theoretically, it would be nice if it was.
Well, that's a, that's a, a reasonable discussion for the council to have. Should the body have five right now?
It did have five.
Yeah.
With the mayor being a voting member of that committee.
And just, I don't think you want five counselors. Um, the mayor obviously never had a vote on council, so that sort of made sense. I mean, not for, you know, as far as voting goes, but I don't think you, any, any, right.
They voted on Finance.
I'm sorry, the mayor voted on Finance, and, but I, but I think because, partially because the mayor didn't, didn't vote on council, I, I think, but that's just, but anyhow, more importantly, um, I, I think that you don't want five counselors on any committee, because it's a quorum, and if anything that passes that committee has essentially already passed, unless a counselor changes their mind when it gets to the council floor.
Now we're making sausage.
Uh, any, any more thoughts on item four? Let's move to item five.
Yeah, yes. Yes, please. I have to agree with Counselor Adams. I think it is sensible of what he's talking about. I think we should not add on another counselor. We should stay the way we are.
And now I do have a?
Counsel Freeman Daniels and Counsel Carney.
Thank you. I, uh, I propose that the Finance Committee remains as four, and that the council president is not required to serve on the, uh, on the committee. And, um, I also think that through the council rules, the president, uh, could, could easily repick, pick committee members whenever. Um, there's nothing that says that the, that the council president can't take members off a committee or, and, or move them around midterm, uh, at least that I know of. So, uh, but, but right now, as far as the ordinance is concerned, I think that the, uh, council, that the specific requirement that the council president be on the committee be, uh, removed.
Uh, Counsel Carney.
Thank you. Um, I am concerned that the council president remain a member of the Finance Committee, if only for the fact that the council president is the successor to the mayor, should the mayor ever be indisposed, and that thorough knowledge of the finances and, and what's, uh, current financially and all of that. I think it, it's very important for the council president to be on top of that. I also agree with other counselors who've said that four is enough. The only, I mean, be, just because things move from the Finance Committee back to the full council, and the only, um, usually when there's a tie, a motion doesn't carry. So there is a, a way for, all it means is that if it's a two-two vote, it doesn't carry. So.
Thank you. Counsel LeBarge.
Yes, I have to agree with Counselor Carney. I feel that the council president definitely should be on the Finance Committee, and I agree, I mean, he is going to be, have to work very closely with our mayor, and I think that our council president should be setting a Finance Committee.
Uh, okay, so shall we move on to the next item? Is everyone okay with that? Um, this is a discussion of, uh, yes.
What about EDLU?
I'm sorry, good point. Um, the, the mayor also serves as a voting member on EDLU, and, um, will no longer, or, actually, will likely not longer, certainly he, he's, he's already abdicated in some way. So, uh, we have to talk about the constituency, I mean, the constitution of, of that committee, whether enough members, enough voting members, participatory members. Counsel Carney?
My thoughts on EDLU are very similar to Finance Committee in that, um, I don't see there any necessity to make any further change than having the mayor no longer a voting member on EDLU. I would hope that the mayor, um, because so many items that come before EDLU actually, you know, are, come through the Office of Economic and Community Development, and are often issues that are, um, come from the mayor's office themselves, that there'll be a strong participation, but I really don't see any issue or problem with any count, any subcommittee that has an even number of council members, just for that same reason. If there's a tie vote, a motion doesn't carry.
Yep.
Any other thoughts on that?
Uh, the, the previous ordinance, I think, if, if my memory serves, also had the mayor's, allowed to have a mayor's, um, appointee, a mayor's representative. Um, do we want to, does the council want to keep that?
Just, just a question, do you know, in that ordinance, did the appoint, did the mayor's representative have a, a vote on that committee?
I believe so. I'll, I'll look for you.
Yeah, they did.
Uh, Counsel Adams.
I, my opinion on that is that, I don't, I don't think there needs to be any need for, I don't think there's any need for a change of that. The reason why the mayor is, is, um, being removed from certain committees is, is to create a better separation of powers, and I don't think that same, um, potential problem exists if there's a designee of the mayor remaining on, on, on committees that the mayor appoints designees.
Yes, discussion on EDLU. Okay, now let's move on to item five, please. Uh, discussion of process for appointment of four persons to a committee to review the city ordinances and to prepare revisions and amendments as needed or necessary to bring the ordinance into conformity with the charter and to fully implement the charter. Uh, the city clerk shall be the fifth member of that committee. Counsel Specter.
The, um, Appointments Committee met and discussed this. You'll see that there's an attached, in our minutes, we have a, um, a statement about our recommendation. Um, in our, in our discussion, um, we just, we would recommend, and we would recommend this unanimously, that the current ordinance committee serve as the three council members, which we're suggesting three council members, serve as the folks, as the council members on that committee, and that the fourth member be a member of the Charter Review Committee, and we did have three people from the Charter Review Committee, um, make contact with me to ask if they could be on it. One of them was the chair of that committee, was David Stevens. Also, all three members of the ordinance committee asked if they could each be on this, and the chair of the ordinance committee said, "Look, he, he believes this might be within their purview and would make that recommendation." It just seemed to make sense that the ordinance committee, which is working on ordinances all the time, be the counselors that would serve on this committee. It also seemed to make ch- sense that the chair, who I think everyone recognized, did an excellent job, um, on this committee and knows a lot about some of the background and the, the atmosphere, what led to certain decisions, and I was really grateful that he was willing to, to, uh, come forward and serve again on this. So that was our recommendation. Um, if any other members of our committee want to speak to that, I left something.
And you can talk about Wendy Mazna.
Yeah, I was going to do that, that next. Um, unless, but I wanted to break that down, that first piece, if anyone.
Well, Counsel Murphy, you had your hand up, and then, and Counsel Schwartz?
No, I just, if that was a motion, I was going to second it. Is that a motion? To, and frame it as a motion, please.
I'd like to frame whatever I said as a motion.
Second it.
That there are three.
Right away.
To make life easier, that the.
She's got it.
Recommend that the three members, you've got that, the three members of the, of the ordinance committee serve on this review committee in addition to the, to David Stevens, who is the former, uh, chair of the ordinance review, uh, committee, for the Charter Review Committee.
And there was a second?
There's a second, but we need to add.
I will add that piece as a separate piece, if that's.
Then you should need to add it.
Okay. It's, I don't, I think it can be a separate motion.
I'm sorry.
I think the question addressed to me, if I could just clarify.
Five members.
There's, there's another piece in terms of the clerk's position. May I add that on as a separate motion? Would that be okay?
Sure, well, actually, I don't think.
It's a separate discussion.
It's by charter. It's not in the charter.
It's in there.
Right, we have, we do have a, a recommendation on that, so that'll.
So the, the motion is essentially, uh, the three members of the ordinance committee, Counselors Murphy, Carney, and Adams will serve on this ad hoc committee along with the, uh, former chair of the Charter Review, uh, the Charter Draft Committee. Uh, and it's seconded. Uh, any discussion on that? Oh, uh, Counsel Freeman Daniels?
I'm disappointed. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, uh, anyone else? Anyone else disappointed?
Oh, just for purposes of discussion, um, if this, if this motion carries, and if this, um, I would hope that all counselors would be as involved in these discussions and feel welcome to join at the table and participate fully in every aspect of these discussions, and I would actually ask, if that's the case, that we, um, if, should there be a quorum, and I expect that there will be, given that there's such great interest in this, that we make sure we abide by the open meeting law and, and declare a quorum at each of these, but also that counselors who have expressed a strong interest know that their opinions would be greatly valued, their input would be extremely valued, and, um, again, that's, that would be my hope. Ultimately, because this is an ad hoc committee, everything will come back to the full council in the end, so if these are seen as opportunities for us to fully discuss and vet each of the ordinances as they relate to the current charter, again, I would encourage all counselors, especially those who've expressed extreme interests, to come to each and every meeting and fully participate at the table.
Uh, Counsel Murphy.
And I think the meeting, the special meeting that ordinance had to look at potential rules changes, I mean, if this is run under the auspices of ordinance, I think I speak for the other members, that we'd intend to run these meetings in a similar manner, where any counselor is welcome to come and participate at the, at the committee level in what we're doing. I mean, that was a very good meeting on the 23rd, and we moved along nicely. We did the work we needed to do, so I think any counselor is welcome to participate in that discussion.
Uh, and to reiterate what Counsel Carney said, these are public meetings with, with solicitation of public input. Uh, Counsel LeBarge?
Yes, thank you. Um, at our appointments and evaluations meeting, I know Counselor Specter had brought it up about how the three counselors on the Committee on Ordinance wanted to be involved in it, and I thought that was the right way to go. They deal with ordinances, why not be on that committee? I highly agreed about, um, we looked at the applications on other candidates, and David Stevens' name did come aboard, and he's excellent. He did an excellent job as chair on the Charter Review Committee, so I did not have a problem. I thought the selection was put in place. That's the way it should have been done, and I'm happy with that.
Any other discussion? You going to call a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, you want a roll call?
Yes, I do.
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Nay.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Specter?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no. The motion passes. Now, on to the next item. Counsel Specter?
Yeah, this is another item in there, and I do realize that the city clerk by, by ordinance in the Charter Review would be on this committee. We just want to ask that of the, of the committee, it's a request, and we spoke with the city clerk, that, that if she's not going to be needed for the meeting, that this be very specific, she will come as needed, um, to these meetings, because many times she won't be needed at the meeting. So we're asking the, the committee to please work out, if you know what the agenda's going to be, you know you're going to need the city clerk present at the meeting, um, she will definitely be there, but she'd like to ask that consideration. We said we would actually bring it up at, at the council level, so.
Counsel LeBarge.
Right, and she also did state that she would attend the first meeting?
Yes.
Uh, Counsel Adams? No.
Let me just, can I just address a, a reason for that, too?
Please.
Which I should have said. Part of this is, the, the city clerk is going to do the bureaucratic work that needs to be done, but she's not part of the discussion that, you know, she might be advising on how to word things or how it's going to be put in, but she doesn't have a vote in how we're going to be addressing or changing the ordinances. And so it does make some sense that perhaps it could be arranged on the committee that there'd be an evening or two when she comes in, when you really need her to look at where do the ordinances go, where they are in the book. She'll also be available by phone if you need her, but to have her sit in on all of our discussions where she's really not part, it's not germane for her to be there. We, we'd really suggest you try and limit her, the amount of time she needs to be present there.
I'm concerned, because I believe that, that she does have a vote.
She does have a vote.
She does.
So, the, she, I mean, i- it's mandated that she is a voting member of this recommendation committee, so as such, um, is, in some order, unfortunately for her perhaps, but is obliged to at least attend as many meetings and be as informed.
Right, well.
Participate in the debate.
She has a vote at the committee level, but the, when she comes to the City Council, which will be the ultimate authority.
The council will vote, but, I mean, just as, just for information purposes, for the, and for the purposes of this, of this discussion, it's kind of important to remember that as a rec, as part of an ad hoc committee that's, that's making recommendations, she will be participating on an equal level, not just in advisory capacity, but as a full voting member of that recommendation committee. That is up to her ultimately, which meeting she chooses to go to, but I think laying out the groundwork for essentially eliminating her from the committee makes me a little uncomfortable. Counsel Freeman Daniels?
I concur, uh, with Counsel Dwight. Uh, I understand the motivation. I'm just reading the charter right here, um, and it definitely, uh, specifies the city clerk as a, as a member. It also says, though, that it, this, the committee shall submit a report with recommendations within one year following its establishment, which would be tonight, uh, and may submit interim reports with recommendations at any time. So, it, it might be that if the clerk wants to save herself some, uh, heavy lifting, she can, uh, the committee could, the other members can signal to her when they'll be working on an interim report, and she can make sure that she is part of that process, but she may not, uh, she may successfully avoid, um, some of the deliberation if she doesn't want to be at all the council, at all of the committee meetings. Uh, I, I don't think it says that every single member has to be at every single meeting, so, uh, I think, I think maybe the, I think maybe what we're, what Counsel Specter is trying to say is that some counselors will understand when the clerk doesn't come to all the meetings. I think that's what he's trying to say.
Well, thank you.
Other counselors might hold it against the clerk and the committee, but some won't.
Thank you.
Um, so that, that doesn't, that, that doesn't require a motion in that it's already mandated, so that's right. Counsel Tacey?
Would there be some communication with the clerk? In these, when you have a, sometimes you have a meeting and you have certain items on an agenda, and there are the things that might blend into that agenda, different items that might not be explicitly put on the agenda in discussion. Um, I'm just curious, I just, trying to figure how, how it's going to work out, and it is a fifth member with a vote.
Counsel LeBarge?
Right. Counselor Tacey, I, I understand where you're coming at, but I think Counselor Specter has directly talked. has directly talked to the city clerk. I've talked with her. She is willing to come to the first meeting. I think whoever is designated as the Chair, they can then, the group, can talk to our city clerk in regards of which way she would like to follow of what they're doing.
Councillor Freeman-Daniels?
This is just a process question. Every recommendation that this committee submits will have to be reviewed by ordinance, right?
Right.
So, does that make anyone else a little uncomfortable?
Are you pointing out a redundancy?
Uh, yes, or a way to override minority, vote, a minority vote.
Councillor Murphy, and then Councillor LeBarge?
My expectation that this committee would submit its report to the council, it would be debated at the council, and then, based on any changes the council made, be referred back to ordinance again, and then come back to council again. So, it's going to get reviewed both ways twice. So, there'll be plenty of processes, I imagine it.
Councillor LeBarge?
Right. I have to say, we have been invited as councillors to attend the meetings. You'd be able, I mean, it's open to councillors to speak. There's your opportunity. So, I think you should attend these hearings and open up the doors. If you have concerns, bring it forth. If you feel that something should be looked at very carefully, then it should be looked at by that committee. I think once it comes to city council, we will do a full debate on it if we don't agree on something. So, I like the system that we're doing.
Any other comments on item five? If seeing none, move on to item six, which is the discussion of the process for enactment of an ordinance establishing an elected official compensation advisory board. For the public, it has been mandated by the Charter that the, that the city council establish a committee to review compensation for elected officials, and that includes school committee members and the councillors. It was written into the Charter. Part of the challenges that come up, of course, is that it's difficult for an elected official to lobby for or move for any increase in compensation for their service, or to discuss whether it's appropriate, because it's always weighted with a, a sense of self-serving. And Penny's kindly gestured that it's like committing suicide, political suicide. I'll, I'll defer to the mayor of Hoyoke on that point. The, the, the reason that, in, this is a committee that will be comprised of citizens who would decide what would be fair compensation. That includes benefits of insurance and the stipends that currently exist. Councillor Carney?
Having served on a previous personnel committee that was devoted specifically to the issue of compensation of elected officials in the last term under the Mayor Higgins administration, the way that we dealt with the possible conflict for looking at councillor, city councillor compensation was, well, first of all, we didn't get that far, but we knew that should we get that far in the discussion, the two councillors would recuse themselves from the process. The other members of that committee were primarily human resources experts, people who worked in either private industry or also in the public sector in human resources, and our own human resources director, Sue Stone. And an enormous amount of work was done in terms of research by city staff, which looked at comparable cities and towns, those that were either regionally comparable, but also those who were comparable by virtue of the population size or the governmental body size. And there was, there was a lot of work that was done, done at that level. And so, my sense is that a similar process, which did result in a recommendation for an increase in the mayor's compensation at that time, would not be unreasonable.
Councillor Tacey?
Yeah, we don't need to invoke that right of necessity here debating this, do we?
No, the, actually, there's a little more wiggle room for the establishment of this commi, this committee. The deadline is, I think, within 180 days of establishing, of, of, an act of charter. But while we have this time, that we should probably discuss, we might consider what would, what would be, what would be the membership of this? What would it look like? Not necessarily forward names, but, and how it should be appointed? Because actually, there are no guidelines beyond the, the fact that the council makes this appointment.
I have a, a process suggestion, that in appointments and evaluations, if we were to take this up so we could begin, just come up with some ideas, and everybody would be invited to, to our meeting? And we could at least come up with some ideas that the rest of the council could either, you know, say, grade or not, and that we at least have some, some framework to work from, that we could further the discussion, that we could put it on the agenda for our next meeting and bring something back to the whole council.
Councillor Carney?
Just to that point, I would recommend that those who served, and, and again, Sue Stone would have all that information, give the, you know, the makeup of that and the reasoning that went behind the makeup, even though it was an entirely mayoral-appointed committee, but it did include representatives from labor, from labor organizations within the city, and from private industry, whether they were city employee, city employers, and also employers that were not within the confines of the city of North Hampton, but also who were involved in, as I said, comparable cities and towns.
Councillor, I even think we would invite Sue Stone to, to our meeting, so that she could discuss with us why they set up that. So, we would, that, the recommendations, and any other recommendations of how we should even approach this in our meeting, but my, I guess I'll make it as, as a, what do we call it? As a...
Make a proposal.
Proposal. Yeah, it's not even, move for a referral to...
Okay, there's a motion for, for referral action.
Second.
Second, from Councillor Murphy. And the motion is to refer to appointments, this discussion to appointments to determine the makeup of the committee. Any, any discussion? Councillor Freeman-Daniels?
I just want to, I'm glad that the Appointments and Evaluations Committee is going to take a look at this and come up, come back with some suggestions. I want to urge them to keep on the table the opportunity for appointment by the council, not simple, not simply mayoral appointees. So, you know, I just want you to note that that's an interest that, that I specifically have. Thank you.
Doesn't it say council appointment, does it?
The council's charged with making, of establishing this committee, so yes.
Have that charged. Right. Okay.
Let me clarify, let me clarify, let me clarify. The process could say, the mayor may nominate, the mayor nominates, the council appoints. Or the process could say, mayor nominates someone, council nominates two people, clerk nominates someone, you know, and so on and so forth.
So, those are the points that will be hammered out at?
Yes, and I was just saying, I'm interested in having multiple nomination procedures. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on, on move to refer? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? All right. With your permission, we're moving on to item seven. Weirs of hay, reappointment, reapportment of, as weirs of hay, coal, and other articles for January 1, 2013, from January 1, 2013.
To approve?
Actually, if you'll allow me, before we...
Second.
We respectfully request, dear Ms. Mazza, we were, this is from Bill Willard. Dear Ms. Mazza, we respectfully request that the following individuals be appointed as weirs of hay, coal, and other articles for the January, a period of January 1, 2013 through January 1, 2014. Joanne Moran, Beth Willard, Donald Willard, Elizabeth Willard, Crystal Willard, and William T. Willard. And all the certificates may be mailed to Willard Incorporated after he gives the offers to save postage. All right, so actually, I'll accept a motion first. Oh, that's, are you...
I just have to remove myself from this.
You're refusing?
My wife is a relative of all of us.
Got it. All right, so you're refusing, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All right, we're going to move for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. All right. Well, we're burning through this. And now, we've come up to the mayor's appointments to the Board of Health. Let's see. The mayor is present, and actually, preemptively, actually, one of the discussions of the rules, and I actually wouldn't mind invoking it now, is that Councillor Adams has suggested that the mayor always be understood as recognized by this body, so that we don't have to go through the tea ceremony every time if a...
Oops.
And the, the mayor is here, and, and actually, you have a memorandum. Do you want to address the memorandum directly, or would you rather have me read it? No, he does not. This is a memorandum from the mayor on appointments to the Board of Health. I received a number of applications from highly qualified members of our community making the selection process very difficult. My goal for these two appointments, these two new appointments, was to ensure that our Board of Health is both diverse and well-rounded in terms of professional background, education, and experience. In particular, I strive to identify potential members who can bring new skills and experience that currently do not exist on the board. After reviewing all of the excellent applications very carefully and in consultation with our health director, I believe I put forward two individuals who achieve my goal in this process and will be excellent additions to our Board of Health. Therefore, pursuant to Chapter 249 of the Acts of 2012, I'm submitting two names for appointments to the Board of Health. And that would be Cynthia Swopis. I, actually, I know her, and I can't believe I blew her name, I'm sorry, and William Hargreaves. Is there a motion?
So moved.
To refer.
Appointments and evaluations.
And who made the motion?
I made the motion.
And it's seconded from Councillor LeBarge. Any discussion? All those in favor of referring this to Appointments and Evaluations?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you.
Now, we're at the point in our agenda where we're reviewing licenses for, first up is a fireworks permit for December 31st. Huh, what's that date? 2012, with a rain date of January 1, 2013.
Move recognition of Penny Burke.
Second.
Second. All those in favor recognizing Penny Burke?
Aye.
Penny, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Penny Burke, the Director of the North Hampton Center for the Arts, and I'm here to request a permit for the fireworks on first night.
I would account for this date of December 31st.
December 31st, 2012, and it's more of a wind date than a rain date.
Right. Councillor Murphy?
I would move to grant the permit.
I second it.
Discussion, questions? Okay. All those in favor approving this fireworks display permit for December 31st, please say aye.
Aye.
Notes? Abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you were here. Next up is an application for secondhand articles at E. Modern, 30 North Maple Street in Florence, Massachusetts. In the honor of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Hampton, we undertake a respectfully petition, your honorable body, for a license as a dealer in secondhand articles at 30 North Maple Street. And it's, I can't even make up the signature here.
Chris Kennedy.
Who's it?
Chris Kennedy.
Oh, it's Chris Kennedy, okay.
Second.
Yeah, it's Chris Kennedy. Sorry.
How many readings?
It's up on the screen.
I can do it.
There it is. Chris Kennedy's signature. It says, Councillor Murphy?
As with all our licenses, I just ask, Mary, we confirm that all taxes, everything's current, and we can grant it? Okay.
I'll second that.
Well, is there a motion?
I'd, I'd, well, I'll move it, sure. If everything, if the papers are in order, I move we grant the license.
Any discussion on the, on this permit? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. I'm going to recess for the Finance Committee meeting and hack it out there for what the Finance Committee actually is. Roll call vote of the, the committee, please.
Councillor White?
Here.
Councillor LeBarge?
Present.
Councillor Murphy?
Here.
Councillor Tacey? Here.
All right, there is a, actually, the first order of business, actually, before we get to this, I think is we do have to clear up this issue of who's chair. I actually, I, I'd like to cede the chair at this point for purpose of making nomination. So, I'd like to pass the gavel, even though I don't officially have the gavel, which...
It's right in front of your computer.
Yeah, this is for a council president, but I actually am the chair only because of...
Default.
Default, yes.
Exactly.
So, I'm going to pass the gavel to Councillor Tacey, just think of it figuratively, pass to you. And I'm going to nominate Councillor Murphy for the Chair of Finance. And I appreciate a second.
I'll second that.
And I guess I get to call the vote, too. Actually, are there any other nominations? All those in favor of having Councillor Murphy serve as the Chair of Finance from here on in for the remainder of the term, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, you now figuratively have the gavel.
I now figuratively have the gavel.
But do you have the agenda? You have everything in front of you? I know this comes up rather quickly. You, we can trade, we can, you can come up here if you'd like, and I'll...
No, that's, that's perfectly fine. You look, you look good there, I'll just, I'll just stay over here.
You have to read the orders. Okay, you got...
You got the orders up there, then I'll, I'll come sit next to you then.
Okay.
I can read the orders.
I'll play Mary.
You can pass them over. Well, she's in control, we established that.
I, I, the puppet master.
And you have the, because I didn't bring my agenda with me.
This is the first order on financials.
All right, the first order is upon recommendation of Mayor David Narkwitz, the sum of $87,596.87 to hereby transferred from the overlay surplus reserve to, to the 2011 overlay reserve.
Recommendation?
Can we recognize the assessor?
Certainly.
Joan Seraphin? She's here.
Does somebody want to move this, what's on the floor?
I did move it. I moved it.
Second, and, second, all right. Then, motion to observe, or recognize Joan Seraphin?
Joan Seraphin.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we recognize the Finance Director as well, Susan Wright.
Second.
I second that.
How about, being that these, the mayor and the Finance Director usually come in tandem, and we've sort of permanently recognized the mayor, in Finance, can we also extend that to the Finance Director, since they're always both here and they always...
I think we should. I'll second that motion.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
So, Ms. Wright is now permanently recognized.
Okay. The order to transfer $87,596.87 from the overlay surplus reserve to the 2011 overlay reserve is because the abatements and exemptions in 2011 are granted as the applications come in, the abatements are settled, so there's still things happening in 2011, and the overlay that was set aside in 2011 was exceeded by $87,000 by the end of June 2012. And Joan is here to talk about some of the reasons why the overlay might be exceeded. We are looking at, we're also setting the tax rate tonight, we're looking at increasing the overlay in the 2013 fiscal year, and in 2014, we're going to also recommend an increase in the overlay, because we're not, we're, we have not moved that number for several years, and we realize we need to make a larger overlay.
The reason I had asked to recognize Joan Seraphin for, so we could get, I get questions about the overlay surplus and the overlay account on a regular basis from constituents, and I was going to ask if the assessor would please explain to the public just exactly what the overlay account is and the overlay surplus.
Okay.
Please.
On the recap sheet, there's a fund...
On the recap sheet, there's a fund that the assessors are giving to work out of. Money is committed to the tax collector to collect, but the assessors have this fund on the recap sheet that they can work out of to give exemptions, of which, 2011, we gave $256,000 in exemptions.
Exemptions for what kind?
Exemptions for elderly people, veterans, blind people, widows or widowers. And that money is, I used to say half that money, but this particular year, we gave $256,000 in exemptions out of the 388 we had in overlay. And the reason for that is we had quite a few people that qualified that hadn't previously because if you remember, when Mayor Higgins was here, we increased the income by $5,000 for the single and the married, and that increased the number of people that would qualify. So, most of our money was used for the exemptions, but then the remaining amount is used for abatements when we have to make corrections or something is exempt or something's overvalued, and we work out of this fund. And we were short for this year. And there have been years when I, when we have about $500,000 in the overlay, but we've been kind of cutting back each year because of the economic times and the trouble with the budget. So I probably should have asked for more when that exemption amount was increased, but I hated to because, because of the situation that we're in. So that particular year for FY 11, we only had $388,000.
So it is correct that the overlay account is for exemptions and abatements, and anything left over at the end of the year becomes the overlay surplus, which goes, and that can continue to build.
Right.
Well, it stays, it stays in the overlay until the assessors vote to surplus it. And they took a vote at their November meeting to surplus $87,000 from prior years to put it into 2011 to cover that deficit.
When I had asked the auditor for the city, Thomas Scanlon, just exactly if you could call that particular account free cash, he said, yes, but I would be very, that would be very, very, it's not a good idea because we really need that money for exemptions and abatements.
It can wind up there.
Yeah.
But it, it isn't.
It's not.
It isn't until it's surplus.
Right.
And then it can wind up there. Council LaBarre?
Yes, thank you. So what I'm hearing is that at the end of 2012, in 2011, with the overlay reserve, we went into deficit of that $87,596.87. And because you are noticing, Joan, that more people are asking you or the city for exemptions, that you are requesting now at your last meeting that you had, that instead of the $400,000, that you would like to have $450,000 put in place, correct?
Right. Every assessor in the state is allowed an overlay to work out of, and I just didn't realize that that many more elderly people were gonna qualify because of that $5,000.
So the overlay, right now, the overlay amount is assessed by your department, correct?
Well, it goes on the recap sheet for the amount of money that we need to raise.
It's determined by the assessors, correct?
Right.
And, and, you know, my point, you don't want to make it excessive because it's money you have to raise. You want to have enough, but not too much because it ends up in the tax rate and it's tax burden, so you want to be able to have enough to do what you need to do, but you don't want to make it excessive.
So Susan, it's now your recommendation that we proceed with $450,000?
Right, in FY 13, we budgeted about $400,000. And we're going to, when we set the recap, some of our receipts we could put up a little higher, so we're going to, and we got a little bit more in state aid that they're now taking back, but there's a number of things that are a bit fluid. So in the recap that Joan and I have been working on, we're going to build the overlay in at about 440, and when we do the FY 14 budget, we're gonna plan on $450,000 for the overlay.
Council Tacey?
Thank you. But I want the public to remember that it's important that this money be available. In 2009, we had our 9C cuts mid-year. And we got to the end of the year, we needed money to fill that hole, and we went into the overlay surplus reserve account at that time for some $257,000 or $8,000 to plug that hole. So the fund is tremendously important. Thank you.
Council LaBarre?
Yes, thank you. So, looking at this, you are requesting two readings tonight, correct? And what would be that reason?
If, if we don't, what we're doing is we're moving it from other years into surplus, and then you're moving it from the surplus into 2011. If we don't do two readings, we have to show the Department of Revenue that we're taking care of the deficit, and if we don't take care of it this way, we have to raise it on the recap. And so that will mean that we have to come up with $87,000 more in the recap, which means I would have to increase estimated receipts by almost that much, and I'm not very comfortable doing that.
Thank you for that because people would probably want to know why we're pushing these two readings on this. Thank you.
Council Tacey?
Very briefly, if you even know, we have been put on notice that there is a possibility of mid-year cuts this year.
I think the mayor's gonna address that later in the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're anxious to get the tax rates out because we got final approval of our values today. We had preliminary approval, and so now they're waiting for the rest of the paperwork, which you will have some to sign tonight for me to send down to the Department of Revenue when you vote on the tax rate the second time around.
It was approved today?
Not the tax rate, but the values were.
The values were. Okay, thank you.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Thank you. I'm just, I'm trying to, I also don't understand this entirely, so I'm a member of the public, I guess. The Board of Assessors voted to surplus the following amounts from 2003 to 2009 totaling roughly $87,000. So that was sitting in the overlay, the previous overlay, not reserve, previous overlay accounts?
Right. There's an overlay for every single fiscal year.
And so, I guess my question is, how much, should we be worried, I mean, the numbers are so perfect, right? So how much more is in the overlay from all those previous years? And why is, why is there money in each overlay from 2003? I mean, isn't that a long time ago? Could someone retroactively file an abatement back to 2003?
No, the abatement time is over.
What's the risk of having all, having any money in an overlay account from 2003?
There can be appellate tax board cases that haven't settled for those prior years. So that's one of the reasons that you keep overlay still active. And as Council Tacey pointed out, a couple of years ago, the Finance Director, to close that budget gap, went through and took quite a bit from the overlay. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room in the current accounts, so we kind of tried to split it among the accounts and leave enough in there. We have to show that we've left enough in there to cover any pending appellate tax board hearings.
Is that for, is that for the state, the state request?
Right.
And, and I don't know if you watched the paper, what happened in Hoyoke. A sizable abatement was granted to the Hoyoke Mall in Hoyoke for a previous year, and they really had to scramble to fund that if there wasn't enough in the overlays. And I think, not that it's the same jurisdiction, but Atlantic City, New Jersey just had to float a bond to cover abatements that finally got granted on their casinos. So you don't want to pilfer that account too early until all your cases are closed for all of those years, because if you're required by the state to fund one of those abatements and you don't have the money there, yeah, it really, you can end up in free cash, but you gotta be very careful when you close those years out if you still have open abatement cases.
I'd just like to give the Assessors Office kudos on keeping track of this and keeping this a really vital thing for the city of North Hampton. Excellent job.
I'd like to congratulate them for getting their value cert, this was a recertification year, so this was a big one.
It is.
So to get DOR to bless the values, the next steps, the rate, and then we can actually send our tax bills, and this will be our actual bill, so the whole abatement process will start over again for this fiscal year. Any other questions? No? Can we vote the recommendation?
Move it to City Council.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was an aye, Councilor?
Yes, it was.
All right, then we'll move on to the next one. Upon the recommendation of Mayor Narkowitz, $250,000 is appropriated for the cost of flood control construction, included but not limited to levy repair and restoration, repair of concrete flood walls, drainage system repair, and improvements to the West Street Pumping Station, Hockenham Road Pumping Station, and any other costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, $250,000 of unexpended proceeds shall be transferred from the city's outstanding general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2012, bonds dated February 9, 2012, issued pursuant to an order of the City Council approved by the mayor November 16, 2006, for the construction and/or reconstruction of surface drains, which project is complete and for which no further financial liabilities remain, and that the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project.
Move to recognize DPDW Director Nick Huntley.
Second?
Second.
Hi.
Mr. Huntley?
Evening, everyone. I was asked to come here tonight to discuss this $250,000 appropriation. As you know, $350,000 was appropriated in 2006, and of that money, we've expended about $100,000 in engineering studies, about $55,000 went into the William Street Brook, and about $45,000 was put into the CDM Stormwater Study, which looked at stormwater and flood control in the city and how we move forward with those costs that we're gonna be obligated to in the near future. I forwarded you two letters, I believe it was last Thursday or Wednesday or Thursday through the city clerk, and basically they're spelling out what we need to do on the Mill River Flood Control System and the Connecticut River Flood Control System. Obviously, we had no money to do at that time. We've been working on engineering, construction documents in-house to get something out to bid for spring construction, to start doing some of the work. Some of the permitting for this work, like the Shoals Removal Project on West Street, is probably gonna take over a year to permit. So some of this is gonna take some time to get through, but we do have immediate remediation work that needs to be done, maintenance type work that needs to be done on our flood control system that was described in these two different letters. So with that, like I said, we're looking to put forward a project this spring that will slowly draw that money down, we'll basically put together a bid tab list of items that be done, and when we hit the money where we're, of the money, we'll stop using those alternates. So that's the game plan. Conversation with the Army Corps, not written correspondence, Army Corps, they realized the city is shy money to get everything done that we need to do in the two letters, and they really wanted us to move forward with the maintenance components rather than the engineering. As part of our presentations to the city regarding the stormwater and flood control problems that we're having in the city, those engineering studies were pegged to be with potential construction work at about $1.2 million. So this has started, like I said, this is taking some of the maintenance work right off the bat that we need to get done.
So, the, these priorities are actually mandated or recommended by the Army Corps of Engineers, the, the maintenance, preferring maintenance over, over the other capital projects?
Well, the engineering studies are gonna look at the seismic stability of the levy system, hydraulic capacity, and what works gonna come of that. That's what we're unsure of. They find then that they couldn't withstand an earthquake of a certain magnitude, there'd be a very large construction project to rebuild those or fix those. So they know that we're ready and can move forward with maintenance, and they think we do a pretty good job of what we're doing now according to the letters that we've seen and the reports, inspections, but they want us to do that sooner than later.
Council LaBarre?
Thank you. Now, at the hearing that we had at JFK, wasn't that brought up about what had to be done?
It was. Yeah.
So, what I'm hearing now is that's pushed off to the side, we can use the $250,000 to go ahead and start doing some of what needs to be done.
Right, it doesn't push off the whole conversation of what we've been having, though. That's continuing forward.
I understand that, but because you have received this information from the Department of the Army, both on the Mill River and Connecticut River, and I've read that, what you're saying to us tonight as city counselors, at that $250,000, you can move forth.
We can start moving forward on some of the projects that are basically been mandated to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of these projects have come to capital improvements in years past and just not been able to be funded.
That's correct.
So they've been, this is, this is stuff that's been on their agenda for a while. There just hasn't been money for, but with this mandate, we kind of gotta move them up a little bit. Any other questions? Then, I think we, we started with one, I think we got one, don't we?
I move to refer.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you for your time.
Well, Mr. Huntley, can you?
Is that a recommendation?
Do you want Mr. Huntley to stay for this one, it comes to recommending? But, Mr. Huntley, could you say, just for a question later on about street acceptance, which comes up relatively soon?
Sure.
Which one you got next? This one?
Yeah.
This part or the other? All right. Upon the recommendation of the Office of Planning and Development and the Finance Committee, whereas the city's tourism gift account allows planning and development to accept donations to make North Hampton more attractive, and whereas, September 20, 2012, the City Council authorized funds to be used from this account for artistic wave finding signs for the Main Street Rail Bridge, and whereas, on April 19, 2012, the City Council heard a presentation on gateway signs from the ad hoc Gateway Beautification Committee, now therefore be ordered that the City Council authorizes the city acting through its Office of Planning and Development to expend funds from the tourism gift account for gateway and other signage, for pavement markings, for plantings, and for street and multi-use trail furniture and improvements. Further, that the City Council authorizes the city acting through the Office of Planning and Development and Department of Public Works to accept gifts of personal property for these purposes.
Move to refer.
Second.
Is that to recommend?
I'm. Move to recommend, I'm sorry. Thank you. Good catch.
Very good.
I also move to recognize.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Biden?
Thank you. So if you remember, you recently, we've had a tourism gift account for a while, you recently gave us authority to use these funds for the art project on the Main Street Bridge. At the time, we had discussion about coming back and getting a more broader authority for other projects as well, and that's what we're before you now. So this would allow two things, specifically the project which was presented before you in the spring about the gateway sign project, potentially six or seven gateways to the city, allowing us to accept donations for that, to help the community move forward in that, and then sort of street furniture and signage along roads and particularly bike paths.
Question?
Council White? Clarify the street furniture?
Benches, lights, those kinds of things.
Council Tacey?
This is, this is an individual gift account. This is, I see the number, the gift account, it has a number. How many gift accounts do we have?
City, I have to ask Susan if she knows the answer to that.
How many do you, in planning?
Planning has two historic, which is before you, historic commission's gift account, and there's our other gift account.
Okay, thank you.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Thank you. I, I want to thank Mr. Director Fiden for working with, with me on, on this, this order. Council White and I sat down with him, and we sort of talked about the interest in balancing, something we talk about frequently, I think, balancing getting, getting things done with a, with a, with a open and, and public process. And the one thing that, that this account has had some trouble with is that is the, the use of. And the one thing that this account has had some trouble with is that is the use of this account for artwork, and I've gotten constituent concern regarding basically allowing artwork to be installed through this order. And I just want to alert the council that to vote on this, this is the final approval for any expenditures that are listed here. There need not be any further public process for any expenditures or funds collected listed in this, for the items listed in this financial order. So I would recommend the council add an amendment, and maybe perhaps the Finance Committee could add an amendment, too. It's very simple. It just says at the bottom, "This order does not authorize expenditures for art," because I think that this council in the past, and the city, has expressed an interest in having further public process when it comes to public art, and I think that would be an important addition to this order, because if it's not added to this order, this vote is the final public process that is required for expenditures of pieces of what could be art.
I might recommend to finance, perhaps we allow that to be done at the full council.
I'll follow that recommendation.
Yeah, that we move it, if it's all right, when the time comes, we move it forward, and then let it get amended at council, so--
I agree.
So that the full council can weigh in on it. It just doesn't come up. Counselor LeBard.
Wayne, would you speak to those points, please?
Sure. I mean, part is definitional for me, and you know, if what we're talking about is sculpture or, you know, fine art paintings, I have no objection. It's not something I think that my department would be involved with, anyway. I think the harder part is things which have multiple purposes. You know, the bench that Harriet Diamond put on Main Street, that's a bench, but it's certainly artistic. It helps bring Main Street alive. The Sojourn of Truth statue. And we have lots of examples of things in town that are artistic. I hope most things we do are artistic. You know, we began this in my department with the wayfinding signs along the bike path. We have 13 kiosks along the way, and we began by designing, frankly, really ugly kiosk stations, you know, metal posts and a sign. And when we went through our public process, we heard people say, "This is a city which values art. Art shouldn't just be a freestanding installation. Everything we do should be artistic." And so I need a definitional piece. Are the new kiosks that we put, are you abandoning those kinds of things? That kind of bench that Harriet did, will you be saying, "Ask it through the process"? Pure installations will be fine, from my standpoint.
Counselor LeBard, do you have a question?
So my question to you, Wayne, is are you agreeing what Counselor Daniels is presenting to us?
So, you know, the gateway signs is an interesting process, because that's the one that I think the concern is about. This is one where we see our role as empowering neighborhood groups. There were a fair number of neighborhood groups, Ward Six being one of them, who've come together for this gateway signage process. So to me, that's the model of citizen participation and input. Planning Office has no input and isn't trying to in the design or the looks of anything about those signs. We're basically saying, money can come through this account, which makes it tax deductible for donors, and we would then hire a contractor, whichever the gateway committee tells us to do. So, yes, it's an artistic endeavor, but it's not, it's one that the public process is driving, that those committees are driving.
Counselor LeBard.
Actually, I would defer, I think Counselor Tacy had his hand up before I did. So.
The art, the definition, the age-old, what is the definition of art is my question. I actually had a complaint on my ward about some stuff in somebody's yard. It actually ended up in the courtroom, and what was junk, the judge allowed because the owner said it was his art. So, and we just had a piece of art approved within the city, and I got several letters from people that didn't think it was appropriate. So I don't know. So this will be a longstanding debate, I think, for time forever. So I just, so I think we're going to kick this around at the full council, and I would--
So given that, oh, Counselor.
So, Wayne, I just need to be clear, and actually also, with this caveat, that I have to speak with some caution, because I'm actually, I have to refrain from presenting my attitude regarding any issue at this point, because I have to, the council have to remain impartial. But, so for purposes of understanding this better, the, for instance, if a neighborhood had a building that they, the neighborhood wanted to paint a mural, is it your concern that the city would have to have, there'd have to be a citywide review and input, and that that might discourage something like that process? Is that what you're talking about, or?
So the gateway signage, as envisioned here, is specifically what was presented before you all on April 19. So this isn't proactive. If there's a new gateway signage effort, I'd assume we'd have to come back and get your authority. So this is specifically that the, this effort that already exists, this ad hoc committee that already exists, and a process that they've already done.
If I may, and I can see Counsel Freeman Daniels probably do the follow-up, but I, Counsel Freeman Daniels has expressed a concern that this is, into perpetuity, assigning the right to determine by the planning office what would qualify for things like, you know, trailblazing signs or other wayfinding signs in the city. Do you, by your understanding of the way that this is being presented, that this would expand anything beyond that? But as I said, street furniture, as you've said, street furniture, of course. Do you see it expanding any?
Well, I mean, I think certainly, street furniture is a good example. Street furniture is new, and is as part of being able to buy benches. I would hate to say, okay, the only authority we have is to buy those really hideous concrete benches, if anything which is a higher, which is a more creative design, might be viewed as being art. And so I think that's the part that makes me nervous, is that I think, again, my own feeling is, everything the city does, to the extent we have an option, should be the most attractive options.
Just one quick follow-up, if I may. The Youth Commission actually, a few years ago, and still, to do something along the lines that other communities have done, which is commissioning a contest, East Hampton does it with bears. Other communities, Portland did it with lighthouses, and I think Minneapolis did it with cows. But the Youth Commission thought of utility, something that served a utility, but at the same time was an artistic expression that defined the unique qualities of the community, and trying to start a contest that would use as a template park benches. Now, where would that fall in this circumstance? Who would have oversight on how that would be realized if that should come to pass? And by the way, there's a lot of problems with that, to be sure, but how do you, do you see that this have any impact, one way or the other?
Well, you know, like most things in the city, most things require multiple approvals. So, you know, street benches, for example, have, and you know, the process, if it's the Board of Public Works or the Department of Public Works, but they have to be comfortable with the process. You know, if money came through this account, planning office has to be involved. So the idea, sort of the protections that we've usually done is having these multiple sign-offs to the process to make sure that various voices are heard and people have a chance to be heard in the process.
Counselor Freeman Daniels. Oh, Counsel--
Yeah, actually, I was going to ask you a question. If you could frame this as, I'd like to hear more about your concern, or maybe even an example where, if you could create one, say, here's my concern here of what might happen. So I'd like to hear a little more about, you know, why you're proposing the amendment.
Mayor Swann?
Sir. Thank you. I don't want, and I was going to say this before, by adding the one sentence that I suggested, and I will suggest on the council floor, the council is not prohibiting expenditures from this account for anything considered to be artistic, or anything that is art, or anything that might be on the borderline between art and function, or anything that is functional that is artistic, or anything that's functional that is art. What it's doing is it says that there is additional approval that the council will issue regarding a project that is art. It's not saying you cannot spend from this account, that if it is art, it's saying the council requires additional approval, and that is the time where the council can decide on the merits of the project, or if there has been sufficient public process, or if there, maybe it doesn't have to be a public process, whether there has been sufficient process regarding this artwork. I know, public art is always a difficult thing. If it's by democracy, sometimes it's not, it's not very nice, right? But the city has some process for public art, and I think that process maybe should become more robust. So this, adding that sentence does not eliminate the ability to spend from this account for art. It just says that this order, which is, again, don't get confused, this is in perpetuity, unless the council revokes it, this order will always stand, that signage, signs around the gateways, pavement markings, plantings, street and multi-use trail furniture and improvements, all of those things can be spent, can be, you can have money spent on them, and in fact, the council won't even appropriate the funds, because it'll be through a gift account, without further council approval, without any further necessary public process. Now, the Planning Department is a department that is very conscious about process, and so they, the Planning Department could involve the Arts Council or neighborhood groups or something, but does not have to under this order. So that's what I'm trying to say, okay?
An example, and some of the examples that, I don't want to give it an example for fear of dredging up, you know, muddy, you know, muddying the waters, but there are cases where, and I don't know if you've heard them, but I've certainly heard of them, where there, where you can think of a marking or something that is artistic that wasn't, that didn't go through the, all the best channels, and the council would not have, would not have a chance to approve or disapprove of the process if we didn't add a sentence like that. That is my issue.
Counselor LeBard.
I also want to say one more thing. I'm sorry. I'm very supportive of the gateway signs, so I want there to be a process that facilitates them. I just think that we should add this sentence, because this is the final approval.
Counselor LeBard.
Thank you. So what you're asking, Counselor Owen Freeman Daniels, is that one little sentence to be added on, so that apparently whatever that they decide to do, which they feel, well, we don't want this concreted bench, we want whatever, okay? Did it come to City Council? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Counselor Swann?
I really feel like this is overmanaging. I really strongly feel this is overmanaging. The idea that nine people, elected officials, would spend time deciding on a park bench or on a sign feels misguided. It feels like an inappropriate use of our resources. I believe that we are delegating to our planning department that is appointed by our mayor, that in turn works with neighborhood groups to figure out what our gateway signs should be, much less anything else. I just think this is a, not an appropriate use of council time.
Point of order is that we're discussing an amendment that's asked in advance.
What I might, what I might suggest we do at Finance, since everybody does want to participate in this, is that we move it forward without a recommendation and let the committee of the whole do it. The one thing I would ask before we do that, before the stifling burden of chairmanship returns to our council president, is there anything else you'd like to say before you're--
No, no. I mean--
Before you're muted by process.
Only points of order and points of information. No, I'm fine.
Okay. Then, not to cut off the debate, because it'll come back to the full council, but are you comfortable with that? That we move it forward without recommendation?
I can say at full council--
Yes, we will say.
Okay. That's what I'd recommend, and then everybody's fully in the game here. So all in favor of sending it forward without recommendation? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And the next order. Upon the recommendation of the Office of Planning and Development and the Finance Committee, whereas the city's historical commission gift account allows historical commission to accept donations for the purposes of furthering its program pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8D, and whereas the commission has successfully used these funds to make books about Northampton's history available, to continue its award program, and to help celebrate the city's 250th anniversary. Now therefore, let it be ordered that the City Council authorize the city acting through its historical commission to expend funds from the historical commission gift account for the printing of books and historical materials recognizing historically significant work through its awards program, historical research, and memorialization of the Northampton State Hospital. Further, that the City Council authorizes the city acting through its historic commission to accept gifts of personal property for these purposes. Move to recommend.
Second it.
All right. Discussion. Do you want to hear--
I would like to reckon, I would like to hear from Mr. Fiden.
Well, actually--
Or, oh, yeah.
Sarah LaValle.
Ms. LaValle's here, who--
I'll second Sarah LaValle.
Do we recognize Sarah LaValle? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this is the Planning Department's other gift account. It's been used over the last several years to make books about the history of Northampton available for sale at Historic Northampton and local bookstores, and to continue the commission's annual awards program.
So, any further questions on this one? Counselor LeBard.
Yes. Could you possibly explain what type of books have they done?
Books about the Underground Railroad, books about women and Northampton's history. These are small, locally published books that wouldn't otherwise be made available for purchase and sale.
And the 350th?
And the 350th, we made a lot of emblems and just helped celebrate the anniversary.
Where else does this money go?
It's been about it recently.
Don't they use them for, like, the memorial awards and stuff like that, whatever?
Yeah, the annual Historic Commission Awards, that recognize historically significant work within the city.
Just to put this in perspective, at the moment, how much money is in this account, roughly speaking?
It's not a significant amount, maybe $8,000.
Because this is essentially a gift account, so it's, it's not a tax dollar, per se, it's contributions and--
Yes.
Okay. Counselor LeBard.
Yes, so, say somebody didn't donate money, but they wanted to go ahead and donate, they owned a company, say, the paper, the printing, or whatever. Can they do that?
Sure. Absolutely.
Well, we--
I recognize--
To accept personal property, we have to go to City Council for a vote.
That's a, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions on this one? Counselor Tacy.
These, before you accept it, does it have to come before the council to accept the money?
Mm-mm.
I didn't think so.
I don't quite understand the law, but we're not required to get City Council approval to accept money. We are required to get City Council approval to spend money. Obviously, most donors don't want to donate money, they're not sure we can spend it. But, so we can accept the money, and we just can't spend it.
The only reason I say this, I know a lot of times, if somebody wants to donate some money as a gift, it has to be accepted by the council. That's why I asked, okay.
Just like school committee.
Any further questions on this one, anyone? So, all those in favor--
Aye.
Aye.
Any questions? So this one is upon the recommendation of Mayor David Narkowitz and the Community Preservation Committee, whereas the Historical Commission submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the state hospital fountain project, whereas the project leverages additional public and/or private funds, and whereas the fountain meets the definition of historic resources defined by Mass General Law 44B, Section 2, and whereas the fountain has been determined to be a relic of significant history by the Northampton Historic Commission, and whereas on November 7, 2012, the Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $75,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to be used to support this project. Now therefore be ordered that $75,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the state hospital project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and city council, and that the park will be permanently protected through city ownership or conservation restriction. Specifically, the $75,000 is appropriated from the CPA Historic Preservation Reserve account. Do we--
I move to move on that one.
Second.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Do you want to hear--
I would like to recognize our mayor.
Sir. Sir.
She's a rec. Well, Sarah LaValle is the mayor. Yeah, it's a historic commission project.
Exactly, but it also says it's recommended, it's counselor, by our mayor.
That's right.
And the mayor is sort of be recognized.
Thank you.
So these orders that are all coming forward now are the results of the Community Preservation Committee's recommendations for round 2, 2012?
Yeah. And this one is a project of the historic commission.
It is, yes.
So that, any questions for Mr. LaValle on this one? Councilor Spector.
There's a statement about part of this money, and the reason for appropriating it would be because other funds could be leveraged. Could you talk about what other funds, grants or other funds are being leveraged or put in by either, it says both private and other places. So I'd like to know what other money is going into this and where's it coming from. And if this $75,000 was not in place, what would happen with those other funds?
Sure. So the historical commission presented a project budget that totaled $145,000, and they requested $102,000 from the Community Preservation Act. The committee, after considering all the recommended projects, decided to move this one forward at a $75,000 level. And this includes in-kind support for the design of the park, Smith College students to work on historic interpretation, site preparation, and value of the donated land by Mass Development.
Can I have a follow-up on that? Thank you. So the $75,000 is about half of the money that was projected to.
It is, yes.
Make the park. And the other contributions are all in-kind contributions? Or is there other money that?
And cash contributions.
Have the cash?
Here in committee time as well.
Have cash contributions already been made? Or is this a hope that cash, or need that cash contributions be made?
There's about $3,000 in contributions that have been made so far, and the commission expects to raise additional funds as well.
Okay. I just have one question, one more question. In terms of the location of where this is, does it, it would seem to me that this increases the value of the land in that area for the developers of the project. And I'm wondering how much they've contributed to the project, seeing as this is something that's making, you know, it's adjacent to their property. And I would hope that they would contribute, or have they been asked to contribute more to this?
Well, the value of the land was taken into account, and that was donated by Mass Development. But the project developers at Village Hill haven't, at least not yet, contributed to the project.
And are they being asked to do that? Were they being asked to do that in terms of?
They, as far as I know, not yet. But there will be a larger fundraising campaign.
Let me just go back to the first question. So of the 70, you said the cost for the whole project was about 142, I forget if you.
About 145.
145.
That's an early projection. It's pretty early in the process. CPA dollars for this one are among the first in, so it's a pretty conceptual budget.
So the $75,000 is about half of the money. And the question I have, so how much more money might be needed? We're saying, well, there's, the land is valued. But in terms of actually bringing this to fruition, besides the contribution of land or the in-kind contribution from Smith and the few thousand dollars, is there going to be a need for an infusion of other cash? And if so, where's that coming from?
What the CPA dollars are intended to be used for, first, are restoration of the fountain that used to be located behind Old Main. And that is, based on an early estimate, was about $43,000. And then any remaining funds left over will be used at the applicant's discretion to move the park project forward.
Councilor Bartsch.
Yes. I've received some calls, and I know counselors have too, by one of my residents on my ward, and I've received three more today. The question is, and I have to agree with Counselor Spector, of you have a developer there, okay? How much has he donated? Even though he has bought in property or whatever, there are businesses locally there. You have Cole Morgan, I mean, you have Jonathan Wright, you have Pat Goggins. These people should be asked. I really feel that there should have been an intensive fundraising program going on here even before going for the CPA money. I mean, money is so tight right now. You know, I have great concerns, and I have people calling me of that $45,000.
I believe what the commission's intent was, was to.
Of the $75,000.
Yeah, secure the funds for the restoration of the fountain and then work towards the park development.
I know, but.
That was a short.
Why wasn't fundraising done first just to see how much they could have raised by the contractors and developers up there? And then go to CPA? Because I think because of what is up at the state hospital hill, you could have gotten a good amount of money from businesses locally in that area.
Yeah, and the commission.
And people are looking at this, you know? The $75,000 is a lot of money.
Councilor Adams.
Ms. LaValle, I had a conversation with the mayor yesterday, and I actually received a lot of information about this from you. It's my understanding that there was a commemoration committee formed that the developer gave that committee money for this project. Is that correct?
I don't believe it was cash, but there definitely were in-kind services donated.
So there wasn't cash, no cash?
Doesn't sound.
And just for clarification, this is going to be on public land, right? It's not.
It will be protected permanently either by the city taking ownership of the property or by there being some sort of permanent restriction on it to ensure that it's never used for anything else.
Councilor Freeman-Daniels.
Actually, that was kind of one of the things I was curious about. That last sentence, the park will be permanently protected through city ownership or a conservation restriction. Is it, it's a little vague.
Yes.
It's a vagary that I'm, I also like to know who's going to hold that conservation restriction.
At this point, it's not known whether the city will end up holding the parcel or whether it will need some sort of conservation restriction if, for say, for example, a homeowner's group owns it. So that's definitely, it's left open.
So, I'm sorry, just, why do we have a hard time knowing whether we're going to, whether the city's going to own that land?
The CPA just didn't want to presume that the city would later accept the property.
Okay. So the state is ready to give the property to the city? Is that right?
Yeah, I believe it's owned by Mass Development.
Councilor Tacy.
Yep. Right. I guess my question is $75,000. And I'll be frank, the developers, I believe, up there, I think, could probably pony up some cash on this. I mean, I just saw a transfer of the purchase of five building lots for a total of $250,000. $50,000 a piece for building. I mean, it just seems that there is some way that the developers could pony up some money here. I find it absolutely amazing that, and I actually tried to buy a lot and I couldn't. If I buy a lot anywhere here in the city, it's going to cost me $150,000 or so thousand dollars. So they're great recipients of an enormous amount of money here. And if this is a gateway to their project, like the gift account for a gateway signs to the city of Northampton, if this is the gateway to their project, I believe there's two, Peckoy and Wright builders. They buy the lots, they develop them, and they sell the houses out of them exclusively. And I think this is pretty much, this is a donation, in my opinion, this is a donation to developers. That's just my opinion. I think it requires a lot of scrutiny.
As presented, the historical commission primarily wanted to restore the fountain that had been located at Old Main and is now rusting behind the Department of Public Works. And without the CPA grant, the fountain would not be able to be restored.
Okay. I see the mayor standing.
Comment from Mayor Narkowitz.
We have the mayor.
Please.
And I have a little bit of history with this because I served on the CAC for many years. And I wanted to just point out that part of the, when the state actually surplus the state hospital land, memorialization was one of the things that was part of that process that the city wanted to make sure that we would construct some kind of a memorial to what had been there before, the state hospital. So there have been a number of different committee, this is actually the second iteration of a committee. There was a committee that worked in the early, in the mid 2000s that included actually former patients of the state hospital that did a lot of outreach, did a lot of work about how best to memorialize the state hospital. And it's a very sensitive issue because, you know, some people have very negative experiences with the state hospital. Other people love the architecture. Other people wanted to be the first one to push the plunger, to bring it down. So this has been a project that we've been working on. They've kept many of the, as many of the artifacts as they could. This fountain's been sitting up at the DPW for many, many years. There's some bricks, there's windows, there's some other things that were saved, never quite knowing how it was going to be used. In terms of what the Mass Development has contributed to it, they've paid for all the design services, all the landscape architecture, design work, to come up with this. They basically gave their designer and said, work to come up with a design for this project, working with this committee, sort of providing the professional services to the committee. They're also obviously giving the land. And it's not a significant amount of land. It's basically going to be a fountain with a brick paver, a sort of small park around it. And it's not at the gateway to the, it's actually set back sort of in the, beyond the residential neighborhood. It's actually where, interestingly, it's very close to where the original fountain actually was.
Exactly.
It's exactly where the fountain was. So it's supposed to be a quiet place of reflection and just allow people who want to go there to do it. So we have, I have had discussions with the, with Mass Development, and they are obviously interested in donating this part of it. You may know the Daily Halligan Memorial, which was also part of the state hospital. And that memorial was actually donated to the city by Mass Development. We accepted it. We actually have a cooperative agreement with the St. Patrick's Day Association who maintains it. And I would envision a similar arrangement probably with the historical commission or with some group affiliated with commemorating the ongoing commemoration of the state hospital to maintain it as well. So it's a very similar arrangement to that. And again, the historical commission has been very interested in these artifacts. I know Kevin Kennedy, not Kevin.
Chris.
Chris Kennedy for many years has been trying to keep track of all these various artifacts and where they've been stored. And we've been trying to figure out a way to how we can restore them. So I believe it's an appropriate use of CPA dollars to do this historic, to do this historic. Rehabilitation, exactly, of these artifacts to help create this park. And obviously, we're going to do some private fundraising as well. So that's why I'm supportive of the project.
Councilor Bartsch.
Yes, Mayor. On this committee, I think I'm hearing you say that there were former residents who lived at the Northampton State Hospital on this committee?
On the very first committee. And actually, one of your constituents was on, Jack Horner, served on the committee as well as a member of the CAC. It was CAC members, and then there were some at-large members. There were former staff. And in fact, on the current committee that's now been trying to carry this through to fruition, there's the, actually, the applicant who is the, I think the lead applicant listed on here is a former staff person at the state hospital who's been involved, again, in sort of the ongoing effort to commemorate. So.
And my reasons for asking that is because when they did close down the state hospital, there are residents here in the city who were former residents of the Northampton State Hospital. So I had concerns. Were they, some of them on this committee?
Yes, in the original, in the original iteration that wrote the original memorialization report, the problem is the report said, we should do this, but it was done at a time when none of the other development of the state hospital had even occurred. So now that something's actually begun there, and there's actually an opportunity to do it, now they've taken this report and are actually trying to breathe life into it. We also didn't have the CPA at the time as a resource for historic preservation. So that's the reason.
Could you explain to me where is this fountain? Where was it located?
Well, I'm trying to think of where, like, where your street is located.
Land Drive, about half a block from here.
It's not over by the main building, is it? Where the main building was?
It was in front of Old Main, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's right.
It was, and that's so, to place it now, you should describe, because he knows this neighborhood. He lives in the neighborhood.
It's literally the same site. So if you go up Old Land Drive, which is the, one of the Wright sides you go up, you go past Moser Street, Jonathan Wright's house is the largest house up there. It's the next lot just beyond that.
So was that near the main building?
Yes, that was literally where the fountain was. Old Main set sort of across the street.
So when you came into the main building, the entranceway, was it placed there in the middle? I can't, I remember a fountain, but I.
It was, it was as a big circle going.
Yes, yes, okay.
All that, just before the main entrance.
So when was this fountain removed?
Eight years ago, 10 years ago.
Oh, it was around the time of the demolition of Old Main. So it would have been about '05 or '06, or probably '06 or '07. And it's been stored, I think, up at the Barnes or up behind the. It's been up at the DPW, just sitting up there. The historic commission put it up there. You had some bricks.
Bricks, bedding, a bed.
Yeah. Clogs. Yeah. So they, the historic commission worked with the DPW to save those artifacts before the demolition occurred. Which, again, you know, the developer was, worked with them to help them do it. There was also an effort to locate a time capsule, which I don't know if that was successful. They did find a, they did find a time capsule as well. So again, it's been an ongoing exercise with the historical commission.
I want to thank you, Mayor, because you've explained it very thoroughly, which some of the things I did not know about, especially with the developers of what they have done, you know, volunteering to do whatever they have to do as far as the design work and so forth like that. I understand what needs to be done here.
I just want to question Counselor Dwight before we, this shows up under your chairmanship
and you can't, do you have any comments you want to make about it?
I, I, well, actually, I actually believe I'm constrained in this, in this committee as well, because if I express my opinion here, it's going to be hard to pretend I didn't say it in the council meeting, so. I do have an opinion for what it's worth, but I'm not going to tell you.
I have a point of order. I don't know that the, because this is, this is Finance, this is the Finance Committee, and it's being chaired by a different counselor. So I think you have the opportunity in this context.
Your opinion may change.
You might, you may change. I, I mean.
She's right.
I, I'm trying to be very conscious of the rules and the spirit of the rules and why they exist. My vote will reflect, and actually, what we're, we're, we're working with is, at the point of my vote, I can express my opinion at that point, so it wouldn't necessarily have an impact or effect of the vote. And we'll, in the, in the process of developing rules, that we will come up with rules that will make it work. But for the time being, I'm, I'm going to err on the side of silence.
I understand that I just see this as a separate, this is a subcommittee meeting, and in the same way that, I don't know if you've expressed similar silence in the Social Services and Veterans Affairs Committee, or in any of the other committees that you've...
In, in, just as a point of order, that's, in, in, there's nothing referred to us in Social Services. There's nothing, there's nothing to...
But you would hold that same opinion in any of the subcommittees in which you, in which you serve?
I've been known to express my opinion in some meetings, yes.
Councilor Freeman-Daniels, and then I think we should move it forward, just because we're all going to get another crack at it outside of Finance.
I agree with Councilor Kearney. So, I just want to confirm about this conservation restriction or city ownership of land. You'll be coming back to, to the council for either, right? Either accepting land or the conservation restriction?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just really a clarification?
Yeah, it's just intended to...
It's vague, but it's...
It will be permanently protected.
It's, it's a promissory note?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But the money will have been approved.
So, can we move?
I want to, no, I want to ask one more question, please. So, Sarah, what I'm hearing from you, which is important to me, is that after we approve this on the first reading, and then the second reading, that they will go out and do more fundraising on this?
Yes, definitely.
All right. So, do you want to spend this without a recommendation?
I'm all set.
Let's keep the discussion going?
Yes.
All right, so without a recommendation, but forwarding it, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we have some more?
Oh, we've got more.
You've got more from the preservation?
Sarah, don't go anywhere.
You don't have your package.
It's here for the jury.
Hey, this one, uh...
Upon the recommendation of Mayor David Narkowitz and the Community Preservation Committee, whereas the Broadbrook Coalition submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the Fitzgerald Lake invasive plant eradication project, and whereas the project will help to improve and preserve the health of Northampton's premier wildlife conservation area, whereas the project's control and removal of invasive plants meets goals established by the Northampton Open Space and Recreation Plan, whereas the applicant has used these funds effectively in the past, and whereas on November 7th, 2012, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $7,400 in Community Preservation Act funds to be used to support this project. Now therefore, let it be ordered that $7,400 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Fitzgerald Lake invasive plant eradication project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, that $7,400 is appropriated from the CPA Open Space Reserve account.
Move to recommend?
Second.
Second. Discussion questions?
Maybe you could explain the reasons why that you're asking for $7,400. Why is it so important that this money be used to remove the invasive plants?
So this is...
What could this actually do to this area, or any area, without having them remove that invasive plant?
Sure. So this is a continuation of a project that Broadbrook Coalition started six or seven years ago to remove some of the worst infestations of invasive plants within the Fitzgerald Lake area. In Cook's pasture and around the dam, there were some very bad infestations where there were almost no native plants left. And invasive plants don't provide habitat for birds or mammals, and they basically are pretty useless, and they have a way of taking over the landscape. So this is a continuation of that project to finish out the Cook's pasture area and then move it along to a few additional areas as well.
Thank you.
Councilor Tacey?
Can you tell me where the $7,400 is going? Is it going to a contractor? Is it going, just, they've always had a big volunteer organization that goes up every year, I understand, they remount plants, and they do a great job. I'm not questioning the need for the removal. I'm just questioning, where, where was the $7,400 in route to?
Sure. This will be used to hire a contractor who is a licensed pesticide applicator to remove some of the worst invasive plants. And these are areas that volunteers couldn't do on their own.
Okay. So this is, do we have a contract with the...
Not yet. They had a contractor that they were working for, for the previous project, and they contacted him to get an estimate.
So they, they might have, they have a contractor on board that they use on a regular basis?
They do, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions on this one?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
On the recommendation of Mayor David Narkowitz and the Community Preservation Committee, whereas the Northampton Conservation Commission and Agricultural Commission submitted an application to the Community Preservation Act for funding for Northampton Agricultural Protection Restriction Program, and whereas the project makes possible continued funding for an established program to preserve Northampton farmland through the purchase of agricultural protection restrictions on the land, and whereas the project will specially target land, tracts of land that are important to protect but are not large enough or valuable enough to qualify for the Commonwealth APR support, and whereas the project saves resources that would otherwise be threatened, whereas the project contributes to the goals of Northampton Sustainability Plan to protect agricultural land, and whereas on November 7th, 2012, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted five to two to recommend $35,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to be used to support this project. Now therefore, be ordered that $35,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Agricultural Protection Restriction Program, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, that $35,000 is appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Reserve account.
Move referral, please.
Second.
Second, right. Question?
I just wanted to ask, Sarah, looking at this, it's saying that it was voted on five to two.
Yes.
What was the reasons for the other two not to support this?
The two negative votes were two committee members who felt that land in the meadows isn't really at risk of no longer being farmed, just because it's such valuable farmland.
In the meadows?
Yes.
Could you say that one more time, please? I missed some of that.
A few of the committee members didn't really think that land in the meadows is at, is at risk of being developed. But it is at risk of being converted to other uses.
Councilor Freeman-Daniels?
Yeah, I just wanted to add onto your, your, the last part of your, of Ms. LeValle's statement. It's true that, it's true that the Meadows project, I mean, the Meadows Plan has dramatically restricted the ability to develop land in the me, in the meadows for, for residential or, or industrial or, or other structural uses, but it can be used for other purposes. Specifically for recreation and possibly intensive recreation with the go-karts or four-wheelers or, you know, a racetrack or something like that. So I think that it is important to have a program like this, a small farm and small farmers program, that will allow farmland in the meadows rather than other possibly detrimental uses.
Councilor Adams? Yeah, you're all set. Next, Councilor Tacey?
Were the farmers brought, the farmers, were they brought on board with this? Were they...
This was an application submitted by the Agricultural Commission, as well as the Conservation Commission. And this is also a continuation of the program that allowed the, I think, 80 acres of farmland to be protected with the, the first go-around of the APR program.
I have a question for Plainer and, for Wayne.
Mr. Fiden?
Is that, is it a fact that it could be developed for other things? I thought it was pretty restricted down there.
Couldn't be developed for homes. That, that, Council Freeman, oh, and Freeman-Daniels is correct, that's, that's protected. But it could be converted to other uses. So, there's a story, I don't know how true this is, but the farmers tell me this, that one of the parcels of farmland was purchased by somebody who trained to sled dogs, which is great and a great hobby, but it's not necessarily what we want to lose the farmland to get to that. The other uses, we, you know, as you can imagine, there's some people who we have partnerships with in some areas and disagree with in some areas. And one of the best examples of that is the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. We have worked with them very hard to preserve, to create the Conti Fish and Wildlife Refuge along the historic Mill River, and working with them, we've preserved almost 200 acres of land. But we very much don't want them to go out into the meadows where people are farming. And so, one of the risks to farmers is they may buy some of that farmland and convert it. So, we think it's great in the floodplain forest, but we don't want to lose active farmland.
Does this require, is this going to come back again?
Yes.
And, and, and it's true, I mean, if they, you'd at least be able to match an offer from the federal government to keep it in farm restriction. Councilor Freeman-Daniels?
Just clarity, you don't have a, there's, is there a specific parcel? There's no specific parcel picked out here for this $35,000. It's just, it's, it's creating a fund to...
That's correct.
See tactical acquisitions.
So we had, this is the first round. The first round was $70,000. We had that maybe two years, and we just did a deal with Charlie Dacinski and preserved a little over 80 acres of land. So it's hard to approach farmers till we have the money capitalized. If this passes, we start off that process.
I'm a big supporter of agriculture, and I, I don't want to get the wrong impression, I just wanted to know if the farmers were all brought on board.
We, the Ag Commission obviously supports this as sponsor. They've had a, just for two years now, an annual farmers forum at Smith Oak. And last year, we talked about this. We went through all the issues that we thought were of interest to farmers. And so we presented, there's only about 30 farmers in Northampton. We presented to all the farmers who were there. Not all are interested in signing up, but they're all, at least, like to know it's an option that's out there.
I can't imagine if I were wanting to have a go-kart track down and be drawing the public into that. So, anyway, thank you.
So are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the recommendation of Mayor David Narkowitz and the Community Preservation Committee, whereas the Northampton Office of Planning and Development submitted an application for Community Preservation Act, Preservation Act funding for the Connecticut River Greenway Project, and whereas the project advances the goals of the opens, of open space recreation and multi-use trail plan and the Sustainable Northampton Plan, and whereas the project will effectively leverage funding from other sources, whereas the project serves more than one CPA program, whereas the project fills a critical funding gap, whereas the CPA funding is contingent upon the project receiving a park grant for which the city has applied, and whereas on November 7th, 2012, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted six to one to recommend $190,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to be used to support this project. Now therefore, be it ordered that $190,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Connecticut River Greenway Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, that $29,600 is appropriated from the CPA Open Space Reserve account, and $160,400 is appropriated from the CPA budgeted reserve account.
Move to refer.
Second.
Second. Discussion questions? Councilor LeBarge?
Um, this project, which I know, we went on site, we went with Wayne Fiden, I think Senator Rosenberg was there, and Peter Colcat. I think that this project is one of the greatest projects that could be happening at this site. I think, like with Jonathan Wright and the Northampton Crew Team, even though they have their barns where they dock their boats and stuff, is one of the best moves that has been made. We are connecting to the trails with the rivers and so forth. I feel we've opened the doors, and it's just the beginning. And I am so pleased about the money being used for this project.
Councilor Adams?
I agree with Councilor LeBarge, but similarly, similar to Councilor Barge's question in the last order, can you tell me what the opposition's viewpoint was?
The one negative vote in this instance was someone who didn't want the grant funds, the CPA grant funds restricted to being a match for the park grant. They wanted them available regardless of whether the city got the park grant.
Oh.
Councilor Dwight?
I, I just, as an AV presentation...
Is that, is that Commissioner Sullivan's check for...
Two days ago, or...
A phone cord check?
Two days ago, Secretary of Energy and the Environment presented us with the $400,000 park grant, which is the matching grant that was referred to in the resolution.
Is that, is it already endorsed on the back?
I tried to...
That's a good one.
Fit through the drive. So, I think they're good for it. So I just wanted to add that.
Cash it quick, though, there's a budget shortage.
Hang on to that before the nine C cut, you better squeeze that check.
Cash it quick. It's, I think we're safe with this one, so.
Yes.
So I just wanted to use a prop to illustrate the good timing of this award yesterday, so.
That's a good one.
A further discussion on this?
So this is all part about the boathouse, this is all part of the...
Yep.
And in this case, very timely, state money seems to have arrived.
Yes.
Are we ready to vote on this one?
Yes.
More questions strike. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good.
Upon the recommendation of Mayor David Narkowitz and the Community Preservation Committee, whereas the Northampton Conservation Commission submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the Conservation Fund, and whereas the fund makes possible increased acquisition or protection of open space parcels in Northampton by supporting fast action on time-sensitive real estate opportunities, and whereas the project may leverage additional public funds and/or private funds, and whereas the project meets the goals of the Northampton Sustainability Plan for protection of open space and agricultural lands, whereas the applicant has used these funds effectively in the past towards the protection of several hundred acres of open space, reflecting the goals established by the Community Preservation Committee, and whereas on November 7th, 2012, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $60,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to be used to support this project. Now therefore, be ordered that $60,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Conservation Fund, and that the grantee meet the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, that $60,000 is appropriated from the CPA Open Space Reserve account.
I second it.
Second?
Recommendation?
And, second, and questions for...
Nope.
Anyone questions on this one? Are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also on the recommendation of Mayor Narkowitz and the Community Preservation Committee,
whereas the Northampton Recreation Department submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funds for Veterans Field Renovation Project, and whereas the project will leverage additional public funds, and whereas the project will serve significant number of residents and maximize utility of parkland, and whereas the project is located close to downtown and will promote use of alternative transportation, whereas the project will allow opportunities for baseball and other sports, whereas on November 7th, 2012, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $45,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to be used to support this project. Now therefore, be ordered that $45,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Veterans Field Renovation Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, that $45,000 is appropriated from the CPA budgeted reserve account.
Move to recommend?
Second.
Questions on this one? Councilor Dwight?
Sarah, so this is, as noted, this is, this has actually been an ongoing, long-term project, and this is the, this is the end of the project, or is it?
Yes. This is replacing the 90-foot baseball diamond that was removed when the skate park at Veterans Field was created. And the additional public funds that are noted here are capital improvement funds, but the Recreation Department didn't have enough to complete the whole project.
The state is now allowing us to maintain existing...
They aren't.
Oh, yes, they are.
They are now. So that, is this, is that what this is about?
Yes. This is the, the first of, of a project type that would not have been allowed under the previous CPA enabling legislation.
So they, they now allow us to spend the money on existing parks. And from capital improvements, REC has been asking to put the Veterans Field baseball diamond back into operation for several years. There hasn't been money for it. So, this is, the advantage of the state changing that law is that we can now spend this money on existing fields that need to work. And this is a great, you know, Veterans Field is right downtown. When we grew up here, that was a busy field, and it's just fallen into disrepair, so.
This is an argument that we've made successfully to the state, and I want to thank everybody that was involved in it with us, to allow us to utilize these funds for the maintenance of existing fields and not just for the purchase and construction of new fields. As our older fields were falling apart, we couldn't touch any of this money for that. This is outstanding. This is where it should be used.
Councilor Barge, did you have...
Nope, I don't have any.
Any other folks on this one? Then, all in favor of recommending this? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Did Mary run out of them yet?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, that's Mary's, that's all she asked for.
We reset, before you want to find it. They requested two readings on the overlay.
The council.
We don't have to do that at Finance. I just want to make sure before we get out of Finance.
No, not until we get out of...
Just the council. Okay. Thank you.
A report from...
Did you need me to stay for a full poll?
No, Sarah, I think...
Do we need Sarah to stay for the full council, or we got all our...
No, she can go.
Thank you.
Now, a report from the mayor and Susan...
Okay, very good, because I don't have an agenda.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was ill-prepared for my sudden...
I know, recension.
So Mayor Narkowitz is here for the presentation.
I just had a, I just had a couple of quick financial updates that I wanted to do. You have the memo from Susan that was for the items on the agenda. Well, first off, I, in addition, just by way of update, in addition to the $400,000 park grant, we also received yesterday a $326,400 land grant, and this is actually for a project that the council approved earlier, I believe. It was for the Broadbrook Gap, it's the 80-acre gap in the Fitzgerald Lake-Broadbrook Conservation Area, and this was again a match that had been part of that, so that came through as well. So those two were presented by Commissioner Rick Sullivan, or Secretary Rick Sullivan, who was out in Western Mass doing a series of these presentations, so that's good news for us, and we did very well in that round. That's the good news portion of my presentation.
Here comes the bad news. Thank you, Mayor.
You may have heard that Governor Patrick a couple of days ago announced that he will be using his existing authority to declare a fiscal emergency and reduce executive branch spending, this is generally referred to as nine C powers. The governor has reduced funding for state agency accounts under his control by 225 million. The Mass Municipal Association has identified 28.75 million in nine C cuts from local government accounts effective immediately, and we've gone through and figured out what the estimated impact to Northampton would be to the, he's announced 11.5 million or 4.8% from the special education circuit breaker program. This could have a potential impact on the Northampton Public Schools of $25,736. The other area in, under Veterans Benefits reimbursement, he's announced a 1.3 million or 2.9% reduction, this could effectively mean 15,747. And then from charter school reimbursements, a $1 million cut or 1.4% from charter school reimbursements, this would be $4,229. Other cuts I've listed here that don't affect Northampton, you'll see are everything from regional school transportation to universal pre-kindergarten to the Chapter 70 pothole account. The governor also announced that he was filing legislation to expand his nine C powers so that he can cut $9 million or 1% from unrestricted general government aid, which could result in an additional $37,176 in local aid cuts to the city. I just want, so you see, we've, we've done the totals here, the potential to the city is 45,712, the potential in the, in the unrestricted general governmental aid, which is the aforementioned, you know, nine C powers is 37,716, for a total of 82,888. Now I will say that for the second category, unrestricted general government aid, he does require legislative approval to do that, to exercise those powers. I have talked to Representative Kocat, who in turn has been in touch with the speaker, and although I don't know that the speaker's made a formal announcement, but the indication that he's given is that the legislature will not support mid-year cuts to local aid. That's the position they're taking. What they'll do to fund that, whether they, they'll have to, exactly, they'll need to find other ways to do that. So in terms of what the impact are, I mean, I think that, I think we'll be able to absorb these potential cuts if they, if, even when they take place. Just, I guess the one concern that I have is it, it's sort of a potential harbinger for our FY14 budget. If the state is already beginning to retract a bit now, it's December, revenues are not meeting projections, we'll be beginning our budget process in January, obviously keeping an eye on what the governor's budget mark is, but this obviously is probably not a great sign if revenues are down, so. But I did want, I know that there's, there's been this announcement, there's been a lot of press inquiry about it, but this is the act, this is how it would actually impact us here, so.
As of today?
As of what we know today, that's correct, and again, the, the second set of cuts would require legislative authority to, to do them, so.
Now, didn't we end up with a revenue deficit just before Mr. Pyle's departure as a result of the state?
Yes.
Yes, that was a much larger, yeah, those were much larger cuts, you know, on the magnitude in the millions, and yes, that, that is exactly, that would be the last time we, we had a mid-year budget cut, so it's not something that happens, it's, obviously it's a, it's a fairly, again, they've, we built our budgets on, on this revenue, cities and towns around, around the Commonwealth built their budgets around this revenue, and so all of the cities and towns obviously would be concerned about this, and other, many cities may have greater impacts than here, but, so, but again, I believe that we have, we've built our budget in a way, and I believe that we've been monitoring spending in a way since the beginning of the fiscal year, that I believe that we'll be able to absorb these, but I'm, I'm more concerned about what it holds for FY14.
Well, and 13 isn't over yet.
Yes, indeed.
So, and Department of Revenue was pretty unforgiving, if they cut us enough that we're in a deficit, we have to add that before we can make it up again, so it's not a good sign. Any questions on this?
Yes.
Counselor Barch?
What would you suggest, Mayor? I mean, do you feel that people should notify our state reps, our senators in regards to not agreeing with Deval Patrick, our governor, and do not support what he's presenting? I have great concerns here, especially the 1.3 million at 2.9% on our Veterans Benefits reimbursements, I mean, it's huge out there. We see in Social Services and Veterans Affairs every year of an increase of money added on to that budget, so what would you like?
Well, I think in that particular account, I mean, he has, he does have the authority to restrict spending in the executive branch, and that would fall under that authority, so it would be as if I, you know, announced that we're gonna, and, you know, frankly, we did actually last January, we restricted spending in, in executive departments, so he has that authority, the money's been given to him, budgeted to him, he's just concerned that the money was based on state revenues and the projections aren't gonna, aren't gonna meet the money that they budgeted to run executive branch operations, so, but in terms of local aid to cities and towns, that's a slightly different thing, that he does require legislative authority, you know, legislative approval to do that, so I, but I definitely think people should, you know, make their voices heard to the governor and to the legislature, I think there's, there's, that's, you know, and again, Peter, Representative Kocat has already expressed to me that, that he does not support that, and, and so, you know, it's kind of funny because we, you may remember, at the beginning of the budget year, there was that whole thing about, were they gonna hold and reserve a certain amount of money, or were they gonna give it to us, and, you know, they're probably wishing they had held in reserve now, but obviously, we, we, we needed the funding as well, so, but they do have a significant rainy day fund, which they're gonna tap into a little bit, so the question becomes, you know, do they cut, you know, cities and towns, or can they, can they absorb it themselves, so.
I am really concerned of seeing these figures, and especially special education, I mean, on the circuit breaker program.
Yes, and I, I was at school committee last night, and I know Superintendent Salzer has already begun to implement some, some, taken some steps within the school department to really look very carefully about hirings and other things to the, to the end of the fiscal year, if these cuts do happen, yeah.
Other questions for the mayor on this unfortunate news?
Yeah, one quick.
Sure.
What was our total Chapter 70 law?
I did not bring my budget book, so I cannot quote that number.
Okay, I didn't know if Susan.
What's that?
Eight million dollars, I believe it is, yeah.
Yeah, because some of the calls I got were, they were going to remove 71.4% of Chapter 70, it was a pothole account, so anyway, there was a lot of fear that involved around 71.4% cut in Chapter 70.
Yeah, I, that one doesn't affect us, so I'm not, it doesn't, I don't know. Is that a typo, or is that a?
No.
Yeah, you may want, because most people think of Chapter 70 as our, yeah, you wanna, you may want to explain what that is.
Yeah, no, the, the pothole money is a separate account that's, that school districts apply, it's like one time, you, you can apply, Northampton Public Schools has gotten pothole money twice, so it's one of the Chapter 7, it's kind of Chapter 70 money, but it's not part of the allotments that everybody gets that we all typically call Chapter 70, it's a grant program, and it's basically given to you when you have, you know, in a particular year, you may have a huge number of sped students, a very big increase, so you might qualify for pothole money, it's basically to fill a hole, is how they put it.
It's a one-time expense that you, you apply for, like if you need teachers for additional students.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and they only put two and a half, they're, they're only cutting two and a half million from that, and they didn't, it wasn't a big program anyway.
I just wanted the public, the pothole money was.
Right.
Thank you.
Question, before we go back into the general meeting.
Can I just, can I ask, oh, did you have a question for me? I just wanted to ask one question, I noticed that you had asked Director Huntley to stay for the remainder of the meeting, was there something?
Just the only, until we talk about, we're, we're gonna refer something relative to street acceptance, and I just had a general street acceptance question, and that's right when we come out of finance, I think, so.
Okay.
We could bring.
I guess I would request, if possible, if you could take that, just to ask him.
Exactly.
I was, I was gonna, was also gonna ask, do we need Assessor Seraphin to stay on the relay thing?
No, no.
We do, we, the assessor has to say and assign the tax rate.
For the tax rate.
Which I'm going to ask that we move up in the order also, yeah, so.
Thank you.
You've been very quiet.
So, not actually possessing one, but running with it, is this adjourned finance at this point, or we set?
Unless there's any new business. Susan, do you?
No, I, you have my memo.
Right. Okay. Good, and having.
Move to adjourn finance?
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. I'll return to my.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Council Murphy, that was well done, so I think, actually, at this point, given the, given the fact that we're almost halfway through the agenda, I was going to recommend a break, that we recess, and when we come back, that I would ask that we move both issues that require the assessor and Department of Public Works director to remain, that we can move those up on the agenda, so then.
Sounds like a plan to me.
We're gonna recess for five minutes.
Oh.
We're gonna, we're gonna recess for eight minutes. Welcome back to the Northampton City Council meeting, and we will continue, we're coming out of recess, and we'll now continue with the rest of the meeting. I am going to ask the council's indulgence and ask if we could move up the setting of the tax rate on the second reading, so that the assessor can move on, and then after that, any other business would be the street acceptance.
Move to take out of order.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joan, I believe you're still recognized, actually, and you, actually, I don't know if the, wait, Joan is still recognized, if you have any further questions, but I'm going to read the order for you, please. Upon the recommendation of Mayor David Narkowitz, the Northampton City Council approves for fiscal year 2013 a residential factor of one and the enclosed tax levy percentages, which are contained herein. What's the council's pleasure on this? It's, it's a multiple-page doc.
Waive the reading, please.
Right, I second that.
So I'll accept the motion for the second.
Move in second reading.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right, and then we're moving up next, and it will be the street acceptance. This petition for street acceptance, with the undersigned pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 82, Section 21, petition of the Northampton City Council accept Lawn Avenue as the city's street, and then there's, leave the adequate signatures below, the following signatures by residents of the city of Northampton, provided in accordance with the city of Northampton rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land, Section 8 of 7, street acceptance plans as amended. Accept a motion, you?
Move to approve.
Move to, I move to refer.
Move to refer, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, move to refer.
And there, and there is a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Want to speak with Ned Huntley on that? Council Murphy?
Yeah, I just asked him to remain, just.
Yeah, I know you did, so.
I know I did, he knows I did too. Well, no, my question was just that, you know, we refer these streets, we had the unfortunate discovery, we had a bunch of streets that weren't actually accepted like we thought they were, and they're in everybody's ward, and I know Department of Public Works has been diligently working on this, and people are gonna see Lawn Avenue, they're gonna say, well, what about my street? So I just wondered if Mr. Huntley was willing to give us an update on the process that Public Works is doing, and where they are, and what we can expect for dealing with the rest of these.
Sure. So far, the Board of Public Works has been out viewing streets, one time they viewed six private ways back last month, actually had a meeting and made votes on those, what they would recommend to the city council. We're in the process of setting up the next meeting in January for another six private ways to go through those. The board has asked, I send letters now to all the private ways to let them know what's going on, that in the next few months, that they'll be approached by certified mail and regular mail, that they'll receive letters, that the board is gonna come view their public way or their private way for future discussion purposes, and we're hoping to have the whole thing wrapped up hopefully by summer or fall at the latest, that's the goal.
But through this ongoing process, people should understand that there's, this winter their street will be plowed one way or the other, they don't have to worry about coming out to find that their streets aren't getting plowed.
That's my understanding.
Do we plow Lawn?
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Any other questions from Ned Huntley? All right, all those in favor referring this to the planning board and also the Board of Public Works, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, if you have any questions, please call.
You betcha, I know we will. All right, so now we're on to reports of committees. Let's see, we have the minutes for the Committee on the Public Safety of September 10th, they also have Transportation, and actually, and I don't know if you want to enter.
Move as a group, please.
Move as a group.
Transportation Parking Commission minutes of September 18th, 2012, and October 16th, 2012. Committee on Elections, Rules, Ordinances, Orders, and Claims minutes of October 1st, 2012, and October 23rd of 2012.
Twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, 2012. And the Committee on Social Services and Veterans Affairs minutes of October.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, wow, okay, so we actually, we're now back to the financial orders. All right, and I believe, as you recall, this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, the sum of $87,596.07 be hereby, and hereby, be and hereby is transferred from the overlay surplus reserve to the 2011 overlay reserve.
First reading?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Move to suspend rules for second reading?
Second.
Was it Rule 14?
Rule 14. All those in favor of suspending rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Move second reading?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of second, for a second reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you very much. On the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, $250,000 is appropriated for the cost of flood control construction, including but not limited to levy repair and restoration, repair of concrete flood walls, drainage system repair, and improvements to the West Street Pump Station, Tockenham Road Pump Station, Medea, and any other costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, $250,000 of unexpended proceeds shall be transferred from the city's outstanding general obligation municipal purpose of 2012 bonds dated February 9th, 2012, issued pursuant to an order of the city council approved by the mayor on November 16th, 2006, for the construction and/or reconstruction of surface drains, which project is complete and for which no further financial liabilities remain, and that the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you.
Point, point of order, just, I would recommend, if you've already read the order in full, to waive reading the second time.
Okay, I didn't read these orders.
If, if the, if the order was read currently.
Finance, okay.
Unless there's some objection to doing that.
No objection, so we'll wait, I will waive reading of the orders.
I won't make it by 11.
Of the whole order.
Of the whole order.
Summarize concisely.
Okay, this is, this is the tourism gift account, this is the authorization to expend funds for the tourism gift account and to accept gifts of personal property. Is there a motion?
Is this the one that Council Freeman Daniels wanted to?
Yes.
Yeah, for discussion.
Not this one, it's the next one.
Yeah, see what happens when you don't.
No, it's this one.
It's this one.
Move to approve.
It's this one.
Second.
This is, all right, now therefore be ordered, the city authorized, the city acting through its Office of Planning and Development to expend funds from the tourism gift account for gateway and other signage, pavement markings for plantings and for street multi-use. Okay, so that.
This is the one.
This is the one.
Yes. Yes.
This is the one.
The one.
All right, so is there a motion?
We just did.
A second? I just want to make sure, because we weren't sure what we were voting on. So, discussion, Council Freeman Daniels?
Yeah, I wanted to just reaffirm what I was saying during the finance committee, that I'd like to add an amendment at the bottom, saying that this order, saying specifically in one sentence, this order does not authorize expenditures for art. And I do that really because I view the council as the safeguarders for, the safeguard, really, for good process. And, you know, oftentimes, we can use the power of our, of our vote to ensure a good process. And this, like I said, will not preclude expenditures from this account for art, it just will require the council to vote again in the future for an art project. And I really don't hope, I hope that the council does not get involved in the particulars of an art project. I just, I hope that that can be done by the Arts Council and, and other, and other agencies and bodies that, that have more, are experienced with art than, than this, than this council, but I think that by adding this sentence, we use it for, to safeguard the process of installing public art. Therefore, I submit this, this amendment.
Second.
And can you repeat the sentence that you wanted to add to the amendment?
This order does not authorize expenditures for art.
Discussion on the amendment? Council Tacy?
I intend to support the amendment, I absolutely agree. The finality of it is, is what's important to me, so.
Councilor Schwartz, you can go behind that?
Yeah, well, I mean, I said my comment earlier. I disagree. I will vote against it. I think it's excessive micromanagement, and while you're saying that we don't need to get into the details, where it's just, to me, it's, it's a layer of aversion of vigilance that I think is not well-placed. I think that we have systems in place through our planning department to manage this, and, you know, work, and the, an example of this, of the planning department working with the neighborhood committees for the, the gateway signs, for instance, or, I just think there's a process that, and I, I just think it's unnecessary, unnecessary council involvement in this.
Council.
So, I'll vote against.
I just want to say respectfully, I understand where Councilor Freeman Daniels is going with this, but I agree with Councilor Schwartz that I believe it's unnecessary, and, and I fear that it might open a Pandora's Box of other areas besides art. So, I, I'm not at a, I'm not convinced that it's a necessary step we need to take at this point.
Council LeBarge?
Yes. I've been seriously thinking about this, and I know with the Gateway Beautification Program, I have full trust in all the wards, okay, people who were involved in that committee. My question is, I understand where you're coming at, Councilor Owen Freeman Daniels, but say my ward decided, well, this is what they wanted for art, where would it go? Once it left the planning department, you're asking for it to come here to city council? Is that what you're asking for?
Council Freeman Daniels.
Thank you. With any, with any project that involves gifts to the city, the city council has to approve expenditures, that, for those, for that, for those gifts.
Right.
So, so this order, as I understand it, is a blanket approval, is a general approval for, for exactly what Councilor Schwartz was talking about, where we're trying to strike a balance between allowing the smooth functioning of government to happen on pavement markings and bike, bike, you know, delineation and so on, but also, I think it's important to have some additional level of public discussion when it comes to public art, because it can be very polarizing, it can be very, it can be very, it can be a process that sometimes you want to have, you want to ensure that there's some, a good, a good process around it, and without adding that, the sentence, we really aren't ensuring that there's any good process. We're really just saying that whatever, whatever the, the Office of Planning and Development uses for sign, considers for signage, that's, that falls under both signage and, and is artistic, is fine, and I think that it would be wise to have the council have an approval, not to say that the council will say, well, this isn't, this isn't good art, or something like that, it's simply that to make sure that, that, well, the public, a public art committee or a neighborhood group has had a chance to ring, to, to speak about a particular project. Without, without that, really, we don't have any guarantee of, of any kind of process other than it being approved in the Office of Planning and Development.
Council Spector?
I was just going to support the amendment, but I realized as you were speaking, and I actually, trying to envision this again, I agree more with Councilor Schwartz, I do think we have something in place. It's called the public. The public, if the planning board does make this kind of, like impose this on the public, impose this on a ward, there would, in this city in particular, there would be an outcry about that. So, one of the things we're saying is, we're not the only place where there's public input. It may not be as direct, and there may not be a specific process in place, but I'm beginning to understand what Councilor Schwartz was saying, that we're adding layers here that I don't think are necessary. I think there would be an outcry if you did that, and I, I trust that that is enough of, and if you had a, a planning department that kept doing that, either the mayor would suffer in the next election, or that planning board would suffer, and, and I think that's enough pressure.
All right, either, in order, for people who have not spoken, it would be Council Murphy, actually, Council Tacy was next, then Council Murphy, and then, and then Council LeBarge, if you'll allow me, these remarks are directed to Council Freeman Daniels to give an opportunity to respond, so, and then Council Adams. So, Council Tacy, Council Murphy?
Thank you. In the acceptance of these gifts for anything, I understand this is about the art, but we have other gift accounts, and we accept gifts for things such as traffic calming, and is this, is this all, all of these things that we accept, if somebody in a wealthy neighborhood says, I can pay for these speed bumps, they get them before somebody else in the city gets them.
That's right.
Maybe it could be a place that needs them more, so I think it opens a door, I, I think there should be a little bit more oversight on this. I got tremendous feedback, once we approved speed bumps for a particular place where a resident on the street had paid for them, and the rest of the city went without them. So, who can afford what, and where does, where does the gift account come from, and what is it for? It's just, it's a gift account, I'm not talking about the art, or who's going to donate to what, but it seems to me as it's pretty open-ended, and it leaves the door open for a lot of other things down the road, and I'm just.
Point of order, are you talking to the amendment, or to the whole?
I'm speaking about the whole issue.
But we're on the amendment right now, so could we address the amendment?
And I said I would support the amendment.
Council Murphy?
So, I guess I am speaking to the amendment.
I listened to Council Spector with regards to public process, but it says that the city council authorizes a city acting through its Office of Planning and Development to expend funds, doesn't say it goes to the, doesn't say it goes anywhere. It just says through the Office of Planning and Development, so it doesn't say with planning board approval, or with historical commission approval, or with any of the other various committees there, it just says through its Office of Planning and Development. And, well, I'm a, you know, hate to think of a committee on art, I mean, I know what a bench is, I know what a tree is, I know what a sign is, I know what a bike rack is, I know what pavement markings are, so if it ain't one of those things, maybe it's art. But it seems like, you know, I can buy Council Freeman Daniels' opinion that, you know, for tangible, functional things, we know what they are, fine, but maybe not the other things.
Council Adams and Council Freeman Daniels.
Just briefly, I think Councilor Freeman Daniels' amendment is very prudent, I think this lacks procedural safeguards. I wasn't comfortable reading that, reading it as is, it essentially allows, until forever or rescinded, this stands, my preference, and it's not an amendment, but just to let everyone know, my preference would be a dollar amount threshold that they could exceed, or could not exceed without our approval, but that's, that's not the motion before us, it's not the amendment before us, and I'm not, I'll suggest it, but I'm not going to propose it. So, in short, I suppose, I support Councilor's amendment.
Council Freeman Daniels and Council LeBarge?
Thank you. So, I want to, I just, I want to echo, actually, the comments from my fellow counselor, Murphy. Really, the, the public does speak about some of these issues, and, again, this is, I don't expect the council is going to initiate a new process. I think that what the council will require in, in the future, possibly what the council will require in the future, is some evidence of some process. It doesn't have to be the same process every time, but it will, I think the council will ask for some evidence of some process, some recounting of what happened at the, at the neighborhood level, or at some committee level, or at the Arts Council level, so that the council can feel comfortable that there is some, there is some consensus going forward, even if, you know, with any project, you're going to have discontents, but there's some, there is some process going forward, and this, again, I just want to repeat what I said very early on, my first statement, this is the final approval for any of those, any of these proposals, so that's, that's, I just want to say.
Council LeBarge, and then Wayne, you have something to add to the informational part of this? Council.
I would like to have Wayne speak, please.
Wayne?
Thank you. I, I, you know, I'm hearing a lot about the process part, and I guess the, the part that I'd suggest is, the reason we thought this would be an easy one, frankly, is this went through a process that had four different neighborhood committees coming together, so if, and what we're planning to do with this, to give you any comfort, is to say gateway signs as defined, you know, you could insert there, you know, funds from tourism gift account for gateway and other signage, you could modify the gateway signage as being gateway signs as defined as this project being done by the Gateway Beautification Committee. This is not a, a planning department project, this is a conduit, we are willing to try to empower these four neighborhood groups working together, so I, I think you have the process, it's not like we really care, planning office really cares what the design is, we just want to give the neighborhoods the power to do it.
Council LeBarge, did you have anything now?
He answered what I wanted to hear.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Opposed in favor of the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, we're good.
Do a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyce?
No.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Council LeBarge?
No.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Spector?
No.
Council Schwartz?
No.
Council Tacy?
Yes.
Council Allen?
Yes.
Council Carney?
No.
The amendment fails, so back to the original motion. Any discussion on the original motion? We'll probably need a roll call on this one as well, I think.
What are we voting on, please?
This is the original motion for the gifts account, to approve the gifts account.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Nay.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Spector?
Yes.
Council Schwartz?
Yes.
Council Tacy?
No.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Boyce?
Yes.
The motion carries? All right, this is the Historical Commission Gift Account, this is for flowers, so I will not read the order, that's everyone's preference.
The reading parts?
Yeah.
You want the, the, therefore, after, okay, now therefore be ordered, the city council authorized the city acting through its Historical Commission to expend funds from the Historical Commission Gift Account for printing of books and historical materials, recognizing historically significant work through its awards program, historical research, and memorialization of the Northampton State Hospital. Further, that the city council authorized the city acting through its Historical Commission to accept gifts of personal property.
So moved.
Suck lackin' it.
Does it mean, or if we have, do we have somebody that is on retainer or something from the city, or for this, or, is there a certain company that, that does this printing for us, or?
Wayne, you have an?
I asked.
I know part of it, so the, the, some of these titles, I think most, I'm not sure about that, came from the three-fiftieth committee, so the three-fiftieth did the process, and they donated their books to the commission, and I know the collective copies has been doing most of the printing. I don't know if it's all the printing, or just most of it, but.
I just wanted to know where.
Yeah. He did quite a bit.
There's no, there's no bidding process on this, or anything like that?
Yeah, there's a relative.
The IG, or anything like that?
We're well below those thresholds.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right. This is, now therefore be ordered that seventy-five thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the state hospital project, and that the grant deemed, approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council, and that the park will be permanently protected from city ownership or a conservation restriction. Specifically, seventy-five thousand dollars is appropriated from the CPA Historic Preservation Reserve.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion, please? Council Murphy, you first, Council Tacy?
I'm usually supportive of CPC projects, but this one is too much money for me, and too isolated a location of the city. This is going to be well in the back of the state hospital property, in the middle of a residential neighborhood, that the citizens in general, in my opinion, the average citizen of Northampton that contributes to the CPC is not going to get any value out of this, given where it is. If they wanted to restore this thing and put it in Pulaski Park and put it downtown where people could enjoy it, I think it would be a more appropriate use of funds, and I generally like historic preservation things, but this thing is too much money and too isolated a location, and if they were to come back to us and say, you know, how about half of this amount of money for it, given where it is, I might agree to that, but seventy-five is too much, given where it's going to be, it might be appropriate, given where it was, but not where it is. Now, it's in the middle of what is a residential subdivision in a very isolated part of the city, so it's just too much money for me.
Council Tacy, then Council Spector, and then Council LeBarge?
And I, I agree, it's going to be in an area where nobody's really going to see it, or, or I say nobody, the, the bulk of the taxpayers, this is taxpayer money, like we've said before, the CPA charge actually comes right with your tax bill, and I think there could be some more outreach done, and some more fundraising up there on that piece of property to, to fund this project. I'm not convinced that everybody in, in my ward would like to spend their, their tax dollars on a fountain in somebody, in some subdivision that they will never, ever see. It's not as though, it's not like the Academy of Music, or, or some such public place, it just, it just, I don't intend to support it, I probably would support it if there was some more fundraising done up there on site. So, and that's, like I said, it's taxpayer money, and I'm just not inclined to support at this point.
Council Spector, you're next.
Yeah, I do understand the dilemma that in doing this whole project up there, that there was a commitment to do some preservation, some historic preservation, but. But I agree with the two counselors who spoke. I'm not going to support this. I think it's too expensive, and I think it's something that should have been, and I know that the developers probably wouldn't, the reason they probably aren't, you know, ponying up for this, is it's probably something that they looked at and said, this is not something they would support. And that really creates a problem, because we should be doing some preservation on this. I would say we should keep the fountain at the DPW, because maybe in a future year, when tax revenues look a little better, because I'm right on the fence here, it's not that I wouldn't come back in a year or two, when things looked better, and approve it. But at this point, given what we're looking at budget-wise, this is about the same amount of money that we're looking at that could have gotten cut in the last few days, and it's just hard to approve it at this point.
Counselor Carney, then Counselor Adams.
And I'll ask my question, actually, through, while waiting for, lack of anyone else from the CPC here, and ask if you would know, could I ask if you would know anything about the specific question?
I can do facts, because I live up there, I can't.
Okay, okay, so the specific question. To what extent does the public have access to this, to this fountain?
It's certainly on a public street, a public site they could go to, it's not a gate, it's not an obvious site.
Right, so it's, but it's not, it's, those who are interested in the long and illustrious history of the state hospital, the Massachusetts State Hospital as it was located there, and from which there's a, you know, glorious view, and a lot of history, given the fact that we've knocked down Old Main, and there's nothing really left, this might be one remnant of that piece of history. And given the fact that the CPA does require one portion of its funds to be dedicated to historical preservation, and given the fact that this was thoroughly vetted by the, and this is not, I'm looking at you, but I'm saying, making this more as a comment, that this was vetted by the CPC, who looked at the best use of the historical preservation money.
Do we advocate for this?
No. I'm looking at him, and I'm making a comment. So, I'll look this way. Given the fact, given the fact that this is also, the use of the required piece of the CPA money, which is for historical preservation, and members of the CPC looked at this, among other, any other proposals that came, and recommended, through their long and involved process, this particular project to us. I would defer, at this point, to the CPC and their recommendation for funding this. And also ask that there be a mechanism of some sort to let people know about this historic and gorgeous piece of, you know, fountain that's left, probably the last piece of anything left of the famous or notorious Massachusetts Hospital for the Insane. Thank you.
Counselor Adams and Counselor Freeman Daniels.
I think what the Ward 257 Counselor said was very persuasive, and almost convinced me to vote against it, but I am going to support it, and part of it's, some of what Maureen Carney said, I do believe that there really needs to be some commemoration of the hospital, and some of the things that took place there. It is on public land, it might not be the most visible piece of public land, but I don't think that it makes sense to have anywhere else but on the state hospital property, former state hospital property. And it does seem really expensive. I asked the mayor, who in turn had Sarah Lavalley send me the budget, the breakdown of the budget, and, and, again, it's expensive, but when you look at the breakdown, you get to see why it costs what it costs, and it makes sense. So, I'm going to support this in the end.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
I'm going to move that we table this till the next meeting.
Is the motion table?
Second.
Not debatable. All those in favor of tabling the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Who said that?
And abstentions?
Abstention, just a question.
Sure.
The purpose of tabling, now that we've tabled?
What is why?
The motion is tabled.
But it's non-debatable.
That's what I'm saying, not debatable, but I.
Just wondered why the maker of the motion, you want to take a look at it, or, you know?
I don't think I have to bring this forward, but I think that the members of the committee that put forth the application, or members of the CPC deserve at least to come forward. We can always, the council can always vote against it in two weeks, or whenever the next council meeting is. So, you know, a lot of times constituents who have a particular interest will show up if they think it's a tight, if it's going to be a tight vote, or a contentious one, and I think that it looks as though there is a contentious vote here.
It's a very reasonable reason.
Also, if I could just request, maybe Sarah Lavalley, if she's watching, if she could email everyone the budget that I saw, just, not to change anyone's mind, if they don't want to change their minds, but just so they can see the breakdown, and why it costs what it does.
Okay, so the motion's tabled, we're on to the next motion. Which is, "Now therefore be ordered that $7,400 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding the Fitzgerald Lake invasive plant eradication. Grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, the city council, specifically, $7,400 is appropriated from the CPA Open Space Reserve Account."
Move to approve.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, please.
Is Sarah still here?
No, Sarah.
Just $7,400, maybe you may hold this. It's not a contract, it's money that would go towards the eradication of the invasive plant, it's not a contract.
That's correct.
This is an approximation.
There's an application from Broadbrook Coalition, it was their estimate, based on talking to their contractor, luckily a past contractor.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any voting opposed? Abstentions?
Counselor, I had my hand up, for a while, at our last, but yet we voted on, and I had it up.
It's the one that got tabled.
Yes.
I know, and Counselor, we have to take an order, people who have not.
I know that, but you never asked me, I just wanted to know.
Please, accept my apology. And thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
On the next, the next order here is $35,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act, funding the Northampton Agricultural Protection Restriction Program, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council, specifically, $35,000 is appropriated from CPA Open Space Reserve Account. Accept a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion, please. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. That will go in this, okay. $190,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Connecticut River Greenway Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council, specifically, $29,600 is appropriated from CPA Open Space Reserve Account, and $160,400 is appropriated from CPA Budget Reserve Account.
Move to approve. Second.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah. I don't intend to support this for the same reasons that I didn't in the first discussion we had at the JFK School. It involves the construction of a boathouse on the property. We are looking at a $1.2 million utility bill to bring water and sewer to this project at this point, and I don't see, I didn't see enough detail or data, or any type of discussion on where that money would come from, except for that it was a $1.2 million egg that we didn't know how we were going to pay for. So, that being said, I also know that the boathouse, for 13 years, we have been provided with housing for the boats and launch space, access to the river at the Oxbow Marina, and I don't see this as a priority at this point. And, given the state of our fiscal state, or the state's fiscal state, I don't see, I don't see the need for this at this point, so I intend to, I intend to vote no on this.
Okay, just for the point of clarification, there was no boathouse mentioned in this, just so we're clear. Then we should keep our conversation to that point, Counselor Freeman Daniels and Counselor Spector.
I understand, I understand your, your, your point here, that we do have to make sure that the dollars spent go to an appropriate use and design, but I do think that this is going to be money well spent. It's going to be getting the public access to the river in ways that, in ways that it's been such a very, very long time since the public has had access to the river, in such a open and, and inconvenient way. So, I am going to support this, thank you.
Counselor Spector?
Yeah, basically, I was going to say the same thing, that this is, I think this is an extremely important, our sole, and also to echo that this is not about the boathouse, we're not paying for the boathouse, and so let's not confuse the issue as people are watching this. This is about, as Counselor LaBarge said, one of the most, I think this is one of the most important pieces for us to get for the public, and we have to think, not only short-term about budget things, we also have to leave things for the future. And this is one of those pieces that I think is absolutely critical, that we protect and that we use, so I'm going to, I'm going to support it.
Counselor LaBarge?
I think I said how I exactly felt in Finance Committee, and it is, it's one of the best projects, and I think that the rowing team in them all deserve this.
Any other comments? Counselor Tacey?
Yeah, I voted for the acceptance of gift of this land. I just did not, I voted against the money to be spent on the boathouse. I do believe that the piece of land, the preservation of the land, it is by far and away a fabulous thing for the city.
Counselor Tacey, I just, I just want to remind you that there's no mention of boathouse in this, and that insofar as, for the point of deliberation, there will come time, maybe, where we will discuss a boathouse, but that is not on.
It has to do with this grant money, in this part.
This grant money is, and actually, I'll read from the memo. These funds will be used to begin work at the Greenway Park at the side of the former asphalt batching plant on Damon Road. The project includes construction of docks, a pathway along the river, parking area, and access to the historic New Haven and Northampton Canal. CPA funds will be used for the local match, as the local match for a state parkland acquisitions and renovations, for communities grant for which the city applied this summer, and as you noted, received the check. So, there is no mention of a boathouse, and please, I think it's important that we keep to the point that we're assigned to discuss. Any other discussion on this project? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Thank you, that will come back. All right, now, $60,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Conservation Fund, and that the grantee meets the conditions, and approved by the Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, and the mayor and the city council, specifically, $60,000 is appropriated from CPA Open Space Reserve Account.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you very much, that will come back. $45,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Veterans Field Renovation Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council, specifically, $45,000 is appropriated from the CPA Budget Reserve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Great project, that's all I would say.
Counselor Adams weighs in as great project. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstaining? Do tell. That's, that is, beautiful financial orders, I believe.
Bill.
Your second. Yes, I'm sorry, you're right, the second. Excuse me. This is the second reading for, do you want me to read the whole order?
Counselor.
We've got to do something, a lot of time.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we now move on our wall here, where we, our rules demand that we cease the meeting at 11 o'clock, and we are not likely to do that until we've all accepted.
Suspend rule.
So, move to, to which hour, let's.
Suspend rule.
Suspend rules and. Okay, so the motion to suspend rules is made in second, and all those in favor of suspending rules?
Aye.
Say aye. Come on, come on.
Aye. Aye.
Roll call.
Nay. Nay, no.
Nays. The nays are Counselor Freeman Daniels, Spector, Tacey, and Adams.
What's that?
This is a movement.
The motion carries, and so does the meeting. We have people who've been sitting here all night.
I know.
And as we, we're obliged to call to the meeting. This is, this is on second reading, back to the business at hand. Now therefore be ordered that all school districts of the city of Northampton are authorized to enter into educational operational software contracted for student information systems for a period not exceeding five and one half.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Please, please, okay, any abstentions? Thank you, the motion carries. This is going to require a roll call vote, upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoitz and the Community Preservation Committee. Do you want me to list all the amounts that we just debated?
No.
Actually, we have a tabled, a table item on this. No, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. This is the second reading of the CPA knowing these things.
I was going to say.
All right. Do you want me to?
Move, suspend reading.
Suspend reading, okay.
Yes.
All right, this is on second reading, though, the, about the following amounts be appropriated or reserved from fiscal year 2013 Community Preservation Fund, estimated revenues $1,200,000 for fiscal year 2013, preservation purpose itself. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. That is now concluded. Here we go. You know, I, I'm going to, I'm going to make these folks sit through, we are going to deal with cats and dogs, I think it's appropriate to move up in the order.
So moved, so.
Thank you, on second. Or this is the later. I'd imagine those chairs are feeling pretty hard about now. All right. This is, upon the petition of 10 registered voters, I'm sorry. The petitions came within, I think you all have a copy. And then there's some, there've been some subsequent petitions submitted, there's a petition to put this in order, which I believe you all have copies of, and then there is a petition from some of others, and I believe you should all have copies, but I'm going to leave you that language, so it'll go into the record. Ray, City Council vote on 12/6/12 on rezoning of 716 Bridge Road, Northampton, Massachusetts, to whom it may concern. We, the undersigned, oppose the zoning change of the land at 716 Bridge Road, Northampton, Massachusetts, parcel 18C-003, from its existing rural residential zoning to urban residential zoning B. This zoning change would allow the property owners to build dens- This zoning change would allow the property owners to build dense housing on the property they purchased with the intent of expanding their existing facility. The abutting property owners are already negatively impacted by the drainage added when the Lathrop community was built in 1988, as the capacity of the area's drainage is already overloaded. Severe flooding and erosion of damaged properties along Hatfield Street, as well as the buried facilities beneath the roadway. Additional water flow into the drainage system will have catastrophic results, duly signed by the following property owners, who own more than 20% of the abutting properties per Chapter 48, Mass. General Law, Section 5, and the signatures are below. Is this no more memos? This is, and who's this from? Oh, this is, oh, this is Ward 3.
It's a different issue.
This is a different issue, so that's not this one. Yeah, thank God. Okay. All right, so there was no recommendation out of the planning board or out of ordinance, right? Is that correct? No, so Wayne, this advances with no recommendation?
The planning board recommended in favor of this change.
I'm sorry, okay.
They recommended with, only if it's a development agreement on the site, which is basically the concern for the plan, this area's, the planning boards looked at rezoning, I'm sorry.
Well, you know what, we need to put it on the floor. So, but thank you, I mean, so.
For purposes of discussion, move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so for purposes of discussion, Wayne, now you can get back up, because you are now recognized next.
So this is an area, if the planning boards looked at rezoning in the past, it makes sense from a sustainable North Hampton standpoint to get greater density within walking distance of commercial areas. The main challenge this area, and it's a big one, is Bridge Road is not broken, but close to it. So we're very concerned about traffic impacts on Bridge Road. And so the planning, you know, people sometimes describe roads as being, imagine a fire hose, can carry an enormous amount of pressure, but you start drilling a little hole in the side, and it loses pressure quickly. Roads are like that, you know, a two-lane road can carry a lot of cars, it's the turning movements that kill the capacity. So each new driveway with a lot of traffic can be disastrous from a capacity standpoint and a safety standpoint. So the planning board's feeling was, this is a good project if Lathrop's willing to agree that all new traffic generated would come out their existing driveway and not use this, go out the existing Shallow Brook driveway, not.
Counselor Adams, then Counselor Specter.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, 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 Counselor Adams first, and then you.
Sorry. Couple of questions for you. As far as the drainage issue, Mr. Cotton suggested that detention ponds are not sufficient to address the drainage issue. This isn't my area of expertise, perhaps you could address the, any issue with drainage?
Sure. There's certainly a drainage problem there. The standards exist now, which didn't exist 20 years ago when Lathrop was developed, is that there can be no net increase in peak stormwater runoff. And so if that property got developed, they would have to convince DPW in order to get a stormwater permit, that they're not increasing the water leaving the site. There's a number of ways to do that. On some sites, detention ponds make sense, if he's right about the clay that's there, then detention pond may not be appropriate. But there's other ways you can do it. You know, the Daily Hampshire Gazette has an underground system. In other communities, they have green roofs. You can do a detention pond that's built up on artificial soil instead of into the ground. So that would be their burden to figure out how to do it, and it wouldn't get permitted until they showed how to do it. But generally, if a site is by definition undevelopable, and that means floodplain typically or wetlands, then you certainly shouldn't zone it for development. If a site could be solved with enough money, then our feeling is always, it should be zoned, what's the proper use, but it wouldn't be permitted until someone proved it got developed. The soil is bad there, but we have a lot of bad soil in the city, and, you know, so it's solvable with enough money.
Follow-up question. It's about spot zoning. It seems as if the main goal of this, maybe the sole goal, I'm not entirely sure, is to allow for the expansion of Lathrop community. So I want to know what spot zoning is, why it's bad, and why this is not spot zoning, and.
And I've, just so everyone knows, I had, I emailed Wayne with this question earlier this week, and he gave me a very robust answer, so I'm hoping he can share that with the council.
There's a legal answer and there's a practical answer. I'm going to do the legal very quickly. There's a series of court cases in this state which have talked about spot zoning, and the basic outcome of the cases is, it's nothing to do with the size of the spot. In fact, courts have started talking about permissible spot zoning versus impermissible spot zoning. It's all about what's the planning rationale behind it. So, you know, if you were trying to put commercial development on North Farms Road, that would by definition be spot zoning, because there's no story there, it doesn't make sense. But if there's a good, strong planning rationale, you can get away with almost anything. So for example, you know, if the city set, in my North Farms Road example, I'm making this up, that we have a goal of having a little mom-and-pop grocery store half a mile of everywhere in the city, then you could justify a little commercial development. So the more thought out the goal is, the easier it is to justify. And so to your point, we are frankly always suspicious of petitions, because petitions come in and may not be fitting the city goal, and so we look at them carefully. But Sustainable North Hampton talks specifically about encouraging more development in those areas that are walkable distances from commercial areas. Obviously, that includes downtown Florence and downtown North Hampton, but it also includes the areas along King Street. So there is a strong planning rationale for rezoning this area, the reason we haven't done it yet was because of the traffic issues.
Counselor Specter was next, and then Counselor Carney, then Counselor Labarche.
Yeah, I think we can all understand that there's been drainage problems there in the past, and so I think that it's understandable that people become suspicious and, you know, cynical that things would be taken care of and that the DPW will, you know, look at this, and, you know, when we get down to it, when someone's ready to develop land, it changes, because then there's maybe a lot of support, we get tax dollars for it, or it's a great cause. And I think there's probably legitimate concern that at that point, where do people turn to make sure that these drainage issues will really be addressed before? So is it just the DPW, or then does the planning board also look at it? Are there any avenues that the citizens who live in that area, the butters, can come back in and say, wait a minute, we've had somebody else look at this, or this is not legit? I guess there needs to be a little more, from my mind, what they're asking for is a little more safeguard, that these kind of things are really going to be done, as Counselor Tacey has been educating me, this storm drain stuff is incredibly expensive. And is that going to be, you know, somebody comes in to develop this, are we going to ask the developer to do that kind of expense, to make sure this is changed, when it could look at, well, no project will be able to go in there with that kind of expense?
Just in terms of permits, there's three permits, each of which have their own thresholds. So Conservation Commission would get involved if they're within either 200 feet of a brook or 100 feet of a wetlands, I don't know the answer to that, but they have jurisdiction there. Planning Board gets involved, they build more than 2,000 square feet, so they would certainly need a planning board permit. DPW gets involved if they're doing altering in any way more than an acre of land. So my guess is there's a Lathrop, there'll be a planning board permit, DPW permit, and I'm not sure about the Conservation Commission.
Come on.
I mean, last thing is, all I can really say is, I would certainly tell you the regulated community thinks the rules are very strict, and that nobody waives them because we want economic development.
Counselor Carney, then Counselor Labarche, please.
Wayne, we did hear from the residents at the ordinance committee, from Mr. Susko, Cotton, and Jeski, and I also received calls from our C.L. Frank, that there's a business in that area that has been impacted by drainage issues from Lathrop. You made reference to the zoning requirements 20 years ago, and the less stringent requirements that existed then, that may have contributed to what we have seen as a history of some drainage problems. It was clear. My statements at the ordinance committee were that I do support those aspects of the sustainability plan that looked for increased housing, certainly housing for the populations that Lathrop community serves, meaning senior, but also single people who have no children. What we know is that there are more people in this, there are more single people with no children than there are either married or single people with children in the country as a whole, and I would imagine it's reflected in North Hampton. So the type of housing that Lathrop provides is something that is known to be necessary. At the same time, I understand the concerns of the neighbors, and I made it clear that while I would be in support of zoning that would allow for meeting those housing needs, it would be only be with the understanding that every effort was made to ensure that there would be no deleterious effect on the butters, and that the specific issue of Berkshire Gas and that line that runs through there to feed the UMass system, that those folks be really brought into the conversation. So I know that that can't actually be written into the zoning ordinance as such, but it would be my understanding that the planning board, the Board of Public Works, and the Conservation Commission would take seriously all of those concerns. I'm also hoping that you can, I also said that we didn't have at that point at the ordinance committee meeting, the full description of the planning board discussion, and I don't know whether that was a unanimous vote, or whether there were other issues that were brought up that we're not aware of tonight, that you could maybe enlighten us.
I believe it was unanimous, but I'm not sure of that, that's my recollection. The discussion on the planning board was both about the drainage, which Mr. Susko brought up and other people brought up, and the board certainly felt that, that's something that comes up more during the permit process. And then the transportation issue, you know, sort of the minimizing the curb cuts is why they supported it. And then obviously, a lot of their discussion was about if fitting sustainable. So they went over those three issues, I think.
Counselor Labarche, you had your hand up, you were.
Yeah, thank you, Wayne, for that information. My current concern is that what's Lathrop put in place way back in, what, 19?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine?
Ninety, that starts well, pardon.
So we're looking maybe possibly 20 years with that development there, and then we're hearing, which I told you I heard at the Board of Public Works hearing, on the sewer water utility fee, hearing about the drainage problem that the butters had. I do know way back, 20 years ago, there was not restrictions placed on how they built in areas, correct?
There were fewer restrictions.
Fewer, okay, just like over on Ryan Road and Austin Circle and that, okay? If they went to build there today, they would not be allowed to.
They would have to do a much different kind of system.
A big kind of, I've been told that it would become very difficult if anybody tried to build off of Austin Circle, Overlook Drive, and Acre Brook.
Yes, right, well, that area was sort of wetlands.
Exactly. So what I'm asking is, because we have more state regulations now, and it does have to go through a permit process, how do we actually reassure these abutters that they're not going to have a flooding problem? How are we going to do that in this city to say, no, if we do rezone, they go ahead, the Lathrop home, which I think it's great that they want to do this, like the counselor was talking about, because I like the one up in Florence Road, it's absolutely beautiful out there, I have a resident who donated property there to allow that to occur. My concern is giving them a guarantee, if we do rezone that area, that there will not be a problem with flooding. I'm really concerned about this, I saw pictures at the Board of Public Works, I wouldn't want to deal with that. So how do we protect the butters?
You know, the regulations in many ways are driven, I mean, and I don't want to make, Lathrop the boogeyman, there's a lot of things that have happened in that watershed that create flooding problems, Lathrop is certainly part of, but by no means the only part. You know, if you look at most of the development close to that stream, it would be different today. Mr. Cotton's house would be different, Mr. Susko's fill would be different, our culvert would be different, certainly Lathrop would be dramatically different. It's just, it's a different universe we live in now than we lived in 20 years ago. And so cleaning up that old stuff is really hard. So it's, you know, having regulations to make sure that an expansion of Lathrop doesn't make things worse, isn't really the challenge. The challenge, the reason DPW is looking at millions of dollars of infrastructure problems, is cleaning up all those existing problems that are out there. So, you know, the regulations, I think, are pretty strong at stopping things from getting worse. They don't necessarily make it get better, and that's a huge challenge.
So say that us counselors approve the zoning change, and eventually, within a year or so, they decide they want to go ahead and add that addition. And because of movement, there always is a problem with earth when there is movement, and they've had previous drainage problems. Would the Lathrop home be fully responsible, that's why I'm asking this, because of them removing the earth, of any kind of damage that would be done to residents if there was a drainage problem again?
Right, right. You know, I can't comment in terms of the private sector nuisance. You know, if some, your neighbor does something upstream from you that creates problems to you, you can sue them from a nuisance challenge. That's not something the city's part of, and so I can't, and that's not my expertise, I can't comment. Our job is, for DPW in particular, and Planning Board secondarily, to review private sector people who do the plans, to review them, to keep them honest, and create permit conditions that we're monitoring these things. One big difference now versus 20 years ago is the follow-up and the monitoring to make sure people are really doing what they're doing.
Right, and I think there's more of an open public.
Yes, absolutely.
Procedure than there was 20 years ago.
I've said it's really perverse, it's a little bit bizarre, but just so you know, the worse the soil is, it's really hard to deal with drainage issues, but it also means that the closer it is to being pavement already, if you follow, I mean, if you have pure sand and you pave it, you increase the amount of runoff. If you have pure clay and you pave it, there's not that much more running, runoff coming. So, you know, not trying to minimize this, huge engineering challenge that they'd have to do, but they're certainly doable for.
Thank you.
Counselor Tacey, then Counselor Specter.
Of course, the, well, I have a little history on that particular piece of property where Lathrop is, it used to be the M.I. O'Connor Construction Lot, many years ago, and actually, when the, and the big house out front, when the, we had a terrible fire on North Maple Street in Bardwell in December of 1969, the family was actually allowed to move into that home while theirs was rebuilt along with, at the Autumn Inn. So, and I enjoy the Lathrop community being there, but my problem with this zoning is, will automatically allow this, the expansion of this, and we are charged right now on the board, on the conference committee, and to try and figure out just exactly how to handle our infrastructure problems, and this is a huge problem. There is a, I believe it's a 10-inch, it has 600 PSI natural gas owned by Berkshire Gas, in the middle of Hatfield Street, which is eroding right now. It is collapsing, it is within about six inches of the edge of the pavement, it is washing down into the ravine. We've all seen this picture, with a six-inch gas main, high-pressure gas, which had a catch basin suspended over the top of it, collapsing. There's, further down that channel, there is another house, I'm not going to say names, but there's three houses in that channel right now that have severe erosion problems, where the bank is actually collapsing into the ravine and is endangering their structures. And to say we're not going to add to the flooding, many of those homes have been flooded already and pumped out, and have suffered severe financial bills to clean this up. There's the ravine behind, on the north side of Hatfield Street, has a 24 million gallon That being said, the, all of this drains down into a puddle that is behind Ken's eyewear. The pipe comes into a space that is one one-hundredth the size of the detention facility, I call it, it's a natural swale, but it wasn't always that until they built Hatfield Street up 12 feet. So that has stopped up the water. The drainage system right now, there is grossly inadequate, I mean, grossly inadequate. I don't care if you slow the water down, you allow the same amount of water to travel through that pipe, whether it's per hour or per day, or whatever, you don't, you're not helping the situation out at all. To do anything right now to make a very poor, poor situation even worse, I think is To do anything right now to make a very poor, poor situation even worse, I think is, in my opinion, is pretty irresponsible. Right now, the way it sits, we're not going to get any worse than we are. And there's no guarantee that all of the engineering in the world, it's not going to stop the rain from falling, it's not going to stop big storms, it is not going to stop flooding. We don't even know what to do at this point with our storm system in the city of North Hampton, it's going to be a huge, we're talking about charging people extra money, the taxpayers, on their property tax bills to pay for these improvements. Now, we're talking about $100 million over the next 10 or so years, maybe 20 years, that we've got to figure out. We need to take, we need to stop and take a step back here and figure out just exactly what we're doing with our infrastructure, it's falling apart. We did the math, if you were to burst that 12, if that road were to wash out, Hatfield Street, and that gas main were to rupture, there is enough gas there to fill the entire Walbert Big Wah, and it's heavy, it's not going to go anywhere, it's going to go right across the ground every three minutes, that's how much gas is there, every three minutes you can fill that entire 38-acre parcel.
Point of order, do you have a question for the?
Yeah, well, I have a, yeah, we're looking to change the zoning to allow this. We're looking to change the zoning to allow more stormwater, whether it be over a period of time, whether it's over 12 hours, or the exact same amount of water going through over 16 hours. It doesn't help this.
On that, I mean, the challenge of stormwater is the peak flows. So if you hold stormwater back enough that you're releasing it after the storm, you know, you get a big storm, you have a huge flush of water, and all the things you're talking about, I absolutely agree with, but if you release the water 24 hours later, when it's, I mean, we all know how quickly water levels drop, you know, if today we were releasing water in Atlantic City, it wouldn't matter, it wouldn't have made flooding any worse. So holding back water does solve the problem often.
Counsel Spector, you were next, and Counsel.
Yeah, I may need information from you as the chair on this one. I'd like to suggest that we refer this to both the DPW Joint Committee, because I have some questions, and see if they do relate to what you're talking about, Counsel Tacey. I'd also like to refer to EDLO. I'm not sure if we, can I make that as a motion, this is already on the table?
I believe you can. The fact that it is on the table, but I'll defer to the Vice President, actually.
I would think you would post, vote, move if you want to postpone this vote, and then right after, move to refer it back out to committee, because it came from committee, it's now here, halt this vote after the motion, and then refer it again to those committees that haven't seen it yet for, based on your suggestion.
It's fine with me, I'm not sure it's procedurally.
Counsel Murphy to, yeah?
Yeah. I agree entirely that RR is inappropriate for this area. I mean, those of you that haven't been reading the zoning ordinance for 30 some odd years, RR is Sylvester Road, okay? It's out where we're buying stuff up, that's the zoning. So it's inappropriate for this location, and in fact, across, on the south side of Bridge Road, it's probably URB, which is what they want to change it to, on the other side of the road, it's RR. So it's definitely inappropriate zoning for there, especially when you consider the sustainability plan that we just adopted, which says, yeah, except for the lack of sidewalks, it's pedestrian scale, the shopping, and public transportation, all sorts of other things. That being said, between January and June, we're going to be asked to redefine what you can do in URA, URB, and URC. So we're going to change this to a zone that we don't even know what you can do in that zone yet, which seems a little unusual to me, and the fact that the sustainability plan says that we're supposed to look at this whole neighborhood and fix the zoning of the whole thing, not just one individual parcel. So it seems a little premature to me to change one piece, when in fact, we're supposed to be looking at the whole neighborhood, and we're changing it to a zone that's going to permit something different six months from now potentially than it permits now. And it would seem to me, if at some point we're having the discussion with the fact that we're not just changing this one piece, but we're changing the properties that also belong to the people that are saying, don't do this now, if we're doing the scope of this whole neighborhood, we may say, you know, it's appropriate to do this, but maybe before we do this and intensify the use, the city wants to fix the drainage problem so that it's safe to change these things so that they conform with the sustainability plan. And I found it very interesting that at ordinance, Mr. Susko himself asked to be URV some time ago, and was sort of unceremoniously told to go pound sand. Okay, so I would, my feeling is, yeah, it makes sense, but it's premature, and if we're going to change it, we should change it for everybody, so, and only after we fix the drainage problem there, because the individuals that don't want it to change, if in fact we're going to change it for sustainability and the good of the whole city, they should get the relief that it will bring to them, rather than just doing their neighbor's piece upstream and leaving them the way they are and not fixing the problem. Let's fix the problem, do the whole thing at once, everybody's going to be the same zone, it's fallen, and with sustainability. So while I agree with it's probably the right thing to do, I think it's premature to do one piece in isolation without dealing with the whole issues that are in this neighborhood, all at the same time.
If you'll indulge me for a second, I have a question. Wayne, are you representing that senior housing is within walking distance of shops? Because that second street certainly is not navigable by pedestrians in their best, in the best state, so I'm, I'm just wondering if that, if we're making the case that Lathrop is desirable for infill, that type where there's access to those facilities?
That density of housing is, I mean, obviously, there's a population where fewer people can walk, although just given the volunteers we've had for Broadbrook Coalition, some people.
And there are no sidewalks down to there.
There are sidewalks across the street, you have to cross Bridge Road.
Right, there's no sidewalks that will actually take you down, there's, the sidewalks, do they take you to the corner?
If you cross Bridge Road, they take you to the corner.
Right, right, okay.
Brand new concrete sidewalks on Cook Avenue, new asphalt sidewalks on Bridge Road.
Counsel Carnegie.
Just hearing the discussion tonight, I do concur with the notion that perhaps this should have a really close look by the Board of Public Works, City Council Conference Committee about the specific drainage problems that exist, and also, what was the other?
EDLO.
And also EDLO. So basically, slowing it down a little bit in order to get a better sense about how the city plans to address the present drainage problems, but then also getting some sort of firmer, solid sense about how any future development might prevent further damage should that happen. And then also, keep, but also keeping in mind that this is not about the development right now, this is about, this is about zoning change that would allow a particular property owner to begin at least an engineering study. I mean, I think what we're hearing is that Lathrop is reluctant to devote the resources and the, you know, what would be required to do the engineering pieces without any sort of sense that they will be able to develop in the future. So while this may be a setback for them in some sort of time, I do hope that if we were to postpone this, refer it then to the conference committee and to EDLO, with the understanding that we would come back then with some, some better sense and answers and deal with the particular zoning amendment at that time. So I'm not sure if the postponement would be to a date uncertain.
Well, in the interest, in the interest of moving things along at 11:30, what is the council's pleasure with this, Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
I, in the interest of moving things along.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Move that we table this motion until, the motion to approve until January 3rd.
The motion is to table till January 3rd, is there a second? It's a non-debatable motion, so.
Second.
Second, okay, so it's not debatable. All those in favor of tabling till January 3rd, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Absentions, okay.
Just another question of the maker, is it your anticipation to have heard back from other committees by the time we get it back again?
You were just looking.
I was just looking up, I don't think.
Can we refer it?
I don't see anything that precludes us from referring it, we just, if we.
We can refer now.
So I need to make that as a motion.
Please.
I will make a motion to refer this to EDLO and to the joint DPW City Council Conference Committee.
It's tabled, so Mary is expressing concern, the fact that it's tabled, does this as a document that can be referred?
My lawyer said we.
It's tabled indefinitely, I just think it's tabled to a date certain, I'm just not sure if, right, so it's tabled to a date certain, I'm not sure if there's, I don't know of anything that would preclude us from in that time, considering another committees.
I think the word tabling is inappropriate, we can only postpone, isn't that correct? We cannot table, we can only postpone to a date certain.
Well, you can lay on the table.
You can table too, but the, we, okay.
I think the motion's been made to refer to those committees.
There's no way you're going to have this done by January.
But then we would just, even if it's not done by then, we just, we just, um.
Well.
Refer back out, refer it again.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Suggestion is, if there's some dispute over whether you can refer a tabled motion, since the motion has, to table has been, has passed, and no one has exercised minority reconsideration, my suggestion is that the chairs of EDLO and the Board of Public Works Conference Committee put these items on the agenda for consideration.
There we go. I think that's, that's an interesting recommendation.
And I also make one more suggestion.
Yes.
That we get a chair for EDLO, because we don't have.
We won't do that tonight.
That will be on EDLO to determine a chair. So as it stands, for those of you playing along at home, the order is tabled to date certain, but it's been recommended that the committee chair, one that doesn't exist yet, will add it to the agenda for EDLO and for the conference committee meeting of the Board of Public Works. So there will be, this discussion is, or there is no decision. It will come, yeah, exactly, basically, it will come to be taken off the table January 3rd on the floor for first reading. Okay.
Comes back on January 3rd.
Back to us on January 3rd.
At which time we have the prerogative to postpone.
Yes.
Exactly, the prerogative always stands, or refer it out.
This Board of Public Works City Council Conference Committee meets Monday, that's not going to be enough time to get that on the agenda, so that I can get back in time for January. The chair is M.J. Adams, it's not.
We can even call another meeting.
Yeah, we can call.
Well, that's true, I mean, you may have to call.
We may have to call a special meeting.
Right.
I'm sorry for that.
There you go, Jesse, big New Year's.
We're back to cats and dogs. What's that? Yeah, I mean, what's your preference here?
Let's let the man.
All right, all right.
Come on to Graves Avenue.
Skip to Graves Avenue. Of course, I might point out, there's only one person getting paid to sit here, two people, actually.
I'm getting a little dog out.
He's got to wait, it's been postponed again.
Counselors, are you abandoning us?
Florence Road.
After 11 o'clock, they're leaving.
Yeah, all right, let's move this along here, this is, whereas the Sustainable Northampton Comprehensive Plan is set to, the pedestrian infrastructure, the counselors?
Hey.
Counselors, whereas the historic, Northampton Historical Society has offered to sell a 19.2-plus foot wide strip of land connecting Graves Avenue with Bridge Street Elementary School, whereas the land provides immediate opportunities for improved pedestrian and bicycle access to Bridge Street School, and is supported by both the current and past school principal, whereas the land provides longer-term opportunities for improved infrastructure serving the school, and whereas the land is not wide enough for a formal extension of Graves Avenue, which would require additional land and future city council approval, and whereas the funds for this acquisition are already on hand and no new appropriation is required, now therefore be ordered that the city of Northampton, acting through its mayor, is authorized to purchase such land at any related easements on adjacent properties subject to a historic Northampton retaining the right of access across the property. Is there a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Second for a discussion.
Okay, Counsel Adams, Counsel Tacey, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Freeman-Daniels.
Questions for Mr. Fiden. Well, how much do you anticipate this would cost?
Thousand dollars.
Thousand?
Yes.
Question for you too, now, if I'm right, it's currently used by the public.
There's a piece of, so this goes, if you did an imaginary line continuing Graves Avenue, this is the southerly half of that, the northerly half that was owned by Peter Jessup is already being used by the public. So if you're a kid and are walking to Bridge Street School, you cut through Peter Jessup's private property, he hasn't kicked you off the property, but we have no rights for you to be there.
No, so Mr. Jessup's property, that, that's being used by the public.
Right, but currently, right.
And how long has that been happening for?
I don't have the answer.
You don't have the answer?
No, I don't know how long it's been happening. Was that? They don't park, oh yeah, it's where the parking lot is. I mean, you know, my daughter's 17, and she walked through there, so, you know, 10 years anyway, but I'm not sure.
So could it be adversely possessed then? If that's the case, it sounds like that might be, might be a case for adverse possession.
I don't.
It's been 10 years, I don't know what it is, but it's usually not that long.
He's using it openly notoriously and is giving people the right to cross, so I don't, I don't think you give it, right.
Counsel Tacey.
Adverse possession doesn't ordinarily work with the municipality, does it?
It doesn't work against us.
It doesn't work against us.
It works for us.
So, but to Mr. Greg Jones's point, he's asked us, or requested that we might postpone this until the next meeting, I don't know if anybody has an appetite for that, but it seemed as though we had some genuine concern, and we really haven't heard from any, anybody ourselves.
I have.
Have you?
That's fine, I mean, I, I hope you don't postpone this indefinitely, but if you want to postpone it two weeks, there's no problem.
I'd like to postpone it till the next meeting.
Counsel Murphy.
I just might point out that there'll be a second reading in two weeks.
Yeah.
So if we do first reading tonight, for the folks in the neighborhood that are still awake and glued to their TVs, if we do our first reading tonight, they can come for second reading, and, I mean, if it's your pleasure, they will get a chance to speak before, they probably don't know that we're doing this twice, so, unless their counselor told them.
On this side, I haven't recognized anyone. Counsel Freeman-Daniels.
Thank you. I have, I do have some concerns about this purchase, but really, I want to offer the opportunity for the neighborhood to meet with the Office of Planning and Development so that they can have some of their concerns allayed. I think that voting on it today is premature. I have a list of a half dozen questions from the abutter, who wasn't even notified, or claims he wasn't, so I really would like to, I'm going to make the motion to lay this on the table till, why not, till January 3rd, to give us a month to get a meeting together with the residents.
Second. All right, look at this, the third motion to table is non-debatable, all those in favor of tabling the motion till January 3rd, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, standing, motion tabled.
Thank you for your word.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else we have to appease now?
The poor camera person.
Yeah.
He can go.
Oh, they get paid $2 bucks.
They love it.
We'll never see her again.
All right, down to cats and dogs, order that pursuant to the authority granted by the General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 167, all dogs in the city of Northampton shall be restrained from running at large, and that's not referenced, the counselors, during the period from January 1st, 2013, through, including December 31st, 2013, the owner or keeper of a dog may use such dog for sporting purposes during the hunting seasons provided for by the fish and game laws of the Commonwealth. Is there a motion to?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This is something that we do every single year.
I know.
Anyway, aye.
It's fun every year, too. This is also upon the recommendation of the Chief of Police, order that a warrant be issued by the City Council of the Police Department under GLC 140, Section 167, to catch and confine or kill all dogs within the city of Northampton that once again are running at large, as provided in Section 167 of said, Chapter 140, during the period from January 1st, 2013, through and including December 31st, 2013.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to point out again that this is part of the state law, that we don't have any, any intention of killing dogs in the city outside of the normal city practices.
This ordinance is established, actually, to prevent pack dogs and other things.
Exactly.
From attacking livestock and, and/or people and/or other pets, so. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel.
Please. Thank you, Counselor Owen Freeman Daniels, for bringing that up, but it's brought up every year by former counselors too who had concerns about this, because people were really concerned when they heard about killing. I, I know Counselor Carney, you were with us when we all had that concern, so thank you for bringing that up.
Yes.
I just want to point out, this is what the city court informed me that the second page that you've got attached to each of these.
Yep.
States that according to the new version of the state law, the mayor alderman or board of selectmen may order and so forth, but ones passed, these have to be posted in two public places in the city or town or in the daily newspaper. They have to be posted to public.
Chad just left.
Once passed.
Oh, once passed. Okay, we have another reading, so hopefully we can catch them.
20th.
Midnight. All right, is there any other discussion on this?
Oh.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, this is going to require a roll call vote. This is upon the recommendation of the Planning Board and the Historical Commission, the Clark School campus contains a rich architectural, human history, and whereas Opal Real Estate Group, and of course, this is second reading, so I don't wave, you want to wave the reading?
What's the, what are the operative?
Uh, the City Council authorized the City of Northampton, acting through the mayor and historical commission, to accept preservation restriction as defined by Mass. Gemmerwach, Chapter 184, on said land for historic preservation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
All right, all right. Second, is there any discussion? All right, uh, we'll need a roll call, please.
Counsel LaBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Mark?
Yes.
Counsel.
Counsel.
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel White?
Yes.
Aye. It passes. Okay, this is upon the recommendation of Counsel Owen Freeman Daniels, an ordinance of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts, providing the code ordinances. Actually, I, I'm going to, what's the council's preference on all these, on these readings here? Which do you prefer?
Well, this one particularly, I think we can skip the reading because we're, I believe postponing it indefinitely.
Right, okay.
What are you doing?
I move we lay this on the table indefinitely.
Second.
Second.
Now, this is the one-way street one, correct?
This is, this is one-way streets.
It's the one, I'm sorry. Yes, so for, for, this is the one-way street.
Table indefinitely?
It's been moved to table indefinitely.
Second.
And it's been seconded, it's non-debatable, of course. All those in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, it is tabled. All right. Counsel Freeman Daniels. Um, what's your preference on these? Counsel? Do you want me to read these?
Sing them.
Do you?
Wear a hat.
You want me to? All right, punchiness has set in, so this is, we're talking about for referral, this is an ordinance of the City of Northampton, providing that the code ordinances be amended by revising Section 350, 11.6 of said code, providing zoning approval criteria.
There's an added sentence.
This is on first reading, I'm sorry.
But I think you could probably just read the amendment.
All right. The amended language in this underlined is all in lieu of payments will be expended with the approval of the mayor and the city council only after first being introduced for recommendation to the Transportation and Parking Commission, consistent with the planning board conditions.
Go perv.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Standing, thank you. All right.
What was that, Bill?
I'm just talking to myself now here.
That's not good.
Yeah. You got coffee. Decaf.
Two. Right, got. Thank you very much. Okay, this is again, upon the recommendation of Counselor Owen Freeman Daniels.
I wish I could do that earlier.
Be it ordained by the City Council in the City of Northampton, the City Council assembled as follows, the Section 22-119 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts be amended so that such section shall read as follows. B to F, providing recommendations for using traffic mitigation funds that are a result of payments made pursuant to 350-11.6 as conditions of any granted special permit or granted site plan review by the Planning Board or Zoning Board of Appeals. The Office of Planning and Development may act as staff to the commission in performing this responsibility.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Very quickly, this is the, this is the companion piece to 350, 11 dot, dot six, basically trying to install a reasonable process for traffic mitigation funds. Many of them, the council's already approved, so they won't go through the Transportation Parking Commission, because they already have, or they have gone through a subcommittee of the commission, but these will, from, going forward, many traffic mitigation projects will, or projects that have traffic mitigation funds as in lieu of payments will, will have a process that at least go to the Transportation Parking Commission, and this expressly allows the Transportation Parking Commission to consider those projects.
And Counsel Carney?
Through the chair. Um, forgive my late night confusion on this matter, but does this take into consideration the proposed amendment that came from the Planning Board, which was to allow for, is it amended now to find?
Wait, I'm sorry, just finish your stuff.
Okay, as I recall, at our joint Planning Board and Ordinance Committee meeting, we heard the Planning Board offer a language recommendation, which was that there be an additional sentence that said, "As per Planning Board," I don't have the language in front of me.
Yes, sir.
And that, okay, then, thank you, that, that. Consistent with Planning. Consistent with Planning Board conditions, and that's been in the previous.
Language just approved.
This is the one that adds a traffic mitigation clause. Okay, okay. Again, just this late hour.
Yeah.
Two, very similar.
I didn't think this was the one that at ordinance, we referred to the Planning Board to get their opinion before we brought it back.
Right.
So this, this is that one, I think, that we sent to the Planning Board to get their input before we.
And their input was to add that sentence that said, "As per, consistent with Planning Board conditions." Only that was in the previous ordinance that we just passed.
Right, so this, it's as amended by, by Planning Board ordinance.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Let me just clarify, this is the companion piece, it simply, it simply authorizes the Transportation Parking Commission to, to create policy around the use of funds, which will come from in lieu of payments with conditions from the Planning Board, which would be the part of the law anyway, but adding that to the previous, to the 350, 11.6, I, I don't think that's, it's off color by talking about it, because it really is the companion piece of the ordinance.
No, I understand.
For the general motion, which is to install Transportation Parking Commission as a body that considers the use of traffic mitigation.
Okay, no, I just wasn't sure that I heard that, that amended line.
Yes.
In this, at this late hour. Thank you.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing, thank you. Upon the recommendation of Counsel Owen Freeman Daniels and Transportation and Parking Commission, an ordinance of the City of Northampton, providing that the code ordinances of the City of Northampton be amended by revising Section 312-33 of said code, providing that location of parking areas for municipally-owned or municipally-operated motor vehicles parking restrictions at certain municipal buildings.
Chair, Mr. President, do you mind if I summarize these?
I would prefer that, thank you.
You need a move, a move to approve?
Uh, take a motion, thank you. It's been moved and seconded.
There are basically two things. One is the elimination of the police department or parking enforcement officers at the end of both paragraphs A and B, inserting Chief of Police instead, since they all get their authority from the Chief of Police. There's the location of parking areas observed for municipally-owned and municipally-operated motor vehicles had previously been under the jurisdiction of the Finance Committee, the recommendation coming out of Transportation and Parking was to make it under the Transportation Parking Committee Commission. We were working pretty hard on the municipal lot, or the municipal reserved vehicles out here in the, behind the city hall and in front of the Pachowski Municipal Building, and also next to the Memorial Building, and also behind the Pachowski Building. And it turns out that there's some tricky policy issues that the Transportation Parking Commission got involved in, and it was recommended that that would be the way to sort of deal in those issues without bringing it up to the Finance Committee. And then finally, in reviewing, this is sort of the chief, what the Chief of Police brought to us last time, it's sort of the bonus, is that there are all sorts of weird anachronisms in the, in the parking, in the parking or, in ordinance controlling parking. In fact, there are lots of parking spaces, for instance, the chief discovered that there are lots of parking spaces on, on Gothic Street that weren't even legal, so this one in particular says that parking's prohibited between 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM, which is not in, it's not current practice. It was like when we found Thursday night that you could park later on Thursday night or something, so that was just to eliminate that, to clean up the lane.
Counsel Ford?
I don't know where this fits in the world of council business, but at 11:54, I will tell you that I think it is too late to do real business. I just think it's too late to give attention to.
Don't we have to do this at every hour past 11:00? Move to continue?
Right, we're going to be doing it.
We don't have to, we usually do it to a specific time and then continue to move it or not, we don't, not by rule anyhow.
No, it's not by rule.
So what was our last motion? Was it to?
Suspend the 11 o'clock rule, and it wasn't.
Yeah, the rule just.
Without specification as to when.
I see. So maybe it just, if I might speak, if I might speak to this.
I agree.
Well, if I may, actually, excuse me, if you'll allow me, why don't we finish the process with this and then we'll take that up as an a quarter of business.
Move the question.
The other, actually, everything's referrals after this.
On the back page.
Right, okay. Move that question.
Called, the question's called. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
This is Ben Rolls for two readings.
You will be hunted down like a running dog.
Move to throw your old Freeman Daniels out of the room.
Counsel's pleasure, the discussion that Counsel Schwartz brought up, or would you like to refer?
Move to take all the referrals as a group.
Refer as a group.
Move.
Uh, any discussion? All, yes.
Yeah, I know.
Go ahead, it's okay, go ahead.
Owen?
Second. No one really did.
I, I was just going to say that I think some of these, it might be appropriate to,